Good afternoon and welcome to the August thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four work session of the mayor and the city council for the city of Hagerstown. This meeting is now called to order. And first up, we have Hagerstown Youth Council, Mayor and Council Participation. And we have Margie Zhou, our Community Development Manager, and then Rachel Paul, Planning and Outreach Coordinator.
Hi.
Hi. So staff have discussed just briefly some Hagerstown Youth Council involvement and decision-making bodies suggested by Councilwoman Shelley McIntyre after our Youth Council event in April. And just some considerations when thinking about what kind of commitment for the youth, just availability, transportation, time commitment, and just a lot of the youth council members are already involved in a lot of other, just either nonprofits or clubs and just making sure we yeah, sports, just keeping their their plate full but not too. So, yeah. One committee that we have discussed a little bit about that we think would be a really great opportunity for the youth is the Main Street Committees. They meet quarterly and it's about an hour to an hour and a half per meeting. So we really like that idea, multiple youth would be able to serve on the committees as well. But we're
Kind of, I think, kind of a good place to get their feet wet as well and just and to see what impact that ends up having. I guess, just like on on youth council, like attendance, participation, that kind of thing. So just kind of see, sort of put the feelers out there, put the kids on some of these committees. And and just just see what the feeling is once, once that gets rolling and and what they come back with.
That's great. One of the other things, Scott, we, you and I had talked about was kind of mimicking what the Board of Education does.
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so also another idea would have a youth council member sit in on work session or regular session or both. To see more day-to-day about what our city government is doing.
I guess if there is
As a non-voting.
Yes, non-voting.
There's a youth opinion, a youth voice that that just has input on, you know, some agenda item, then, because I think that was the whole point, I guess, of youth council is to to give them that voice and that platform. And in local governments.
Well, not even, you know, even if it's not, does the Board of Education, do they have a voice at the table that during the meetings? Or is it basically they're taking it back to, okay?
I know that, I know they're given opportunity for like comments, they have, they're allowed to present comments.
Oh, okay, nice. And any, you know, they'll be able to pick up on, maybe they watch every meeting, maybe they do, I don't know. But if they don't, it'd be nice to have a representative, you know, various representatives, I, I really like that idea a lot.
Any?
I guess.
No, I think it's my idea.
It's a good start.
So, um, I guess as far as the implementation, would you have any, like, would you guys have any ideas? Maybe sort of start sliding kids into these positions.
Well, I guess getting their, and, you know, getting their feedback, you know, who is available, you know, as you mentioned, they are very, very busy. And then to have a, even if they came to the seven o'clock, you know, regular session, which might be a little bit more flexible for their schedule, if we could just start there and select one person, the the chairperson, you know, we start there and then go down. And the Main Street meetings are there during the day, though.
Yes.
That's tricky.
Yeah, I know that was one consideration. Depending on, I guess, the youth who would be involved and possibly reaching out to the schools to see if maybe they could be excused, since it would be hopefully just once a quarter. Wouldn't take too much time, or alternatively, maybe having the meetings recorded and then the youth would be able to watch, provide comments. So I know that that is one pickup with the
Maybe it'd be a senior whenever they're, you know, wrapping up their classes and stuff.
Or if there was like a youth Main Street, like, kind of formation of sorts, you know, Brittany could probably use the help.
Yeah.
Yeah, the idea is, so, that's a Brittany question. But to do something, and I know, you know, as a business owner in Main Street, you know, they, it's hard to get away during the day for just for the business owners, you know, if that's something that can be kind of done later in the evening for some of us and but asking them, always ask them.
Okay.
I'd suggest putting together, like, any of the committees you're, you're thinking about putting youth council on, you know, look at the times, put a schedule together and see who can attend. That would be a good start, probably.
That's good, absolutely, yeah. Okay.
I always thought the planning commission would be something, because it's really fun. That they could really learn a lot, though, about what was going on in their community, you know, even to just be, because they're public. So to be able to just sit in on it and listen for their own peers, to be able to report back to what they've heard and what they've maybe not a voting member, maybe not a participating member, but just the, here's, here are these meetings that are public. And these are things that would be really, really interesting, I would think, for the youth to know, like, oh, there's a, what, there's a sheets coming, things like that.
Panda Express can rate them, yeah.
Right, and see how that all works, that it's not just sitting here, you know, doing all these, there's so much that goes on behind the scenes. But just to give them those opportunities for the public meetings that are later in the evening, I think that would be just an opportunity for them to listen so their voice is even louder when they are making their own plans.
Absolutely. Um, see, when the council's together, I'll, I'll get that list together and I'll reach out, see who's available and and start with the regular sessions and see. Who knows, maybe somebody wants to come to work session too, so we'll see, I'll put the feelers out there.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we have dual highway safety project, Jim Bender, a city engineer, and George Moges, is in the same room, Maryland City Highway Administrator. I said that wrong, I'm so sorry, how do I say it?
Joe Moges.
Moges, Mr. Joe Moges, welcome.
So, good afternoon. At last week's council meeting, I made a presentation about the dual highway safety demonstration project. And I know that the council raised several concerns about different aspects of the, of what was being proposed. And so I asked Joe, actually, he came, he was here for the whole day working out of our conference room, but I asked him to come to this meeting. He's the Senior Safety Officer for the Maryland Department of Transportation, and he's kind of the lead from the MDOT side on this project. And he has a lot of the background information on why we're doing this project. And he can, you know, between the two of us, we can answer any specific questions about what's being proposed for the installation. I do know that a couple of the things that were of concern that were raised last week, one was the question, is this actually a temporary installation? Or is it going to be permanent? And it is very much going to be a temporary installation. The plan is to install as quickly as we can, I mean, the plan had been by, by now, mid-August, to have it installed and remove it in November. Part of what plays into that is that the speed cushion, the temporary speed hump that we're talking about putting out in the westbound lanes of dual highway, it can be there now, but it can't be there once we start getting snow and we have to plow. You know, so I think we're trying to collect three months of data before the snow gets here to allow us to do that. So that was, I know that was one of the questions, I know that there were concerns raised about the use of flex posts along there. And I don't know if Joe wants to speak to that, but I think we're really just here to answer questions and see if we can get the, the council to the point where you give me permission to go ahead with executing the agreement with Smart Worth America and also doing the procurement that we need for these materials.
Kelly, there was a lot of questions last week while you were here. I'm not sure if you watched the meeting, but I can see your face was like
Like, so what's Christian on now?
Kristen, you want to take us off?
I mean, the questions that I had last week were really associated with, one, the location of the, the speed humps on the westbound lane that appear to be just before the curve as you come in. And and the tendency for individuals to either speed up or slow down at that curve. One, because they are entering or exiting, the ingress and egress points that are on the westbound lanes, either into McDonald's, CVS, or the car wash and some others. So folks have a tendency to break off there. But the speed humps being provided look like they are in lane speed humps, meaning they don't go all the way across. So cars are definitely going to have the tendency, or the driver, is definitely going to have the tendency to try and veer around that, especially given the fact that there are ingress and egress lane openings on both sides of that. And you're doing that right at the bend. So for me, I don't think that those speed humps are the appropriate type to put at that location. And even if you do put them there, I think that they should be moved back roughly fifty to a hundred feet before the curve begins and before the, especially the ingress egress to the McDonald's and CVS shared location. So that was the concern that I had on the westbound direction. On the eastbound direction, there are a number of temporary traffic markings, as well as use of the, the plastic ballards. And it appears that those ballards are going to be a number of colors. And on the one side of the road, they're, they're in yellow, and on the one, the other side of the road, they're white. I think that that's going to confuse the driver, especially those that are heading up the hill to leave downtown. And as I said, you hit that last light right before what everybody thinks of as the old sheets. And if you're going to eliminate that left turn lane onto Cannon?
Yeah.
At that location. The tendency for folks to sort of beat that light, leaving downtown to hit the dual highway, and now suddenly not be able to make that left or have to curb that enthusiasm. And get stuck behind those cars that now have to be forced to make the left. I can see the, the, the potential for increase in rear-end collisions there. So those, for me, I think that at that specific location, it diminishes pedestrian safety on the eastbound side, and I think for the westbound side, given the number of folks that I see walking on the sidewalks, the way that those speed humps are positioned and their location also, I think, increases the potential for you know, an absence of pedestrian safety.
All right, that's a lot, so I gotta so, start with how we got here. So initially, we tried to engage with the city of Hagerstown to, part of this whole program is not for us to dictate where this project goes. We communicate with local DOTs and cities to understand where their areas of needs are. And we could see if we can partner and come up with an opportunity for a quick build project to make an impact in the short term and potentially speak to whatever might be interesting in the long term. This particular location was identified by multiple parties, including HTPMPO, so those Matt Mullin X, this is an HIN corridor, they have a study. They stress this location would be quite impactful. It happens to also be in our pedestrian safety action plan priority corridors, so it was flagged for us as well. It just made all the sense in the world for us to not even move to another location. We said, all right, let's try this spot. Initially, it was just eastbound, it's forty at Cannon, but we, after field meetings, we actually realized we should probably tackle the dual highway. So eastbound and westbound approaching Cannon Avenue. With respect to the speed cushions, I understand your concern about motorists potentially trying to veer around speed cushions. If you actually look at the westbound approach, we are channelizing the approach, so there's no shoulder there, so you can avoid the speed cushions. We are actually slightly shortening the McDonald's left turn bay. So there is no ingress or egress to avoid the speed cushions once you're in westbound US forty. It was designed specifically for that, and it's located between the ingress and egress to the liquor store. And that is adequately both before the curve and after the signal, so that we don't impact the signal. We increase safety along westbound US forty. And we, in a roundabout kind of way, are addressing a lot of the pedestrians crossing to and from the liquor store. Initially, there was a strong consideration for a temporary crosswalk. I canceled that right away and said absolutely not, because once you install it, how are you going to remove it? What if something happens after? So now to the eastbound, well, before I move on to eastbound, can I answer your questions about westbound?
I think what you're suggesting, as it applies to the cushions that you plan to put in, you don't plan on installing permanent barriers.
These cushions are not permanent, they would never be permanent, they're modular devices.
I mean, to the McDonald's ingress egress.
Oh, the flex posts and everything?
Yes.
That's all temporary?
Right.
Not only is this temporary, this is a grant opportunity where you guys, where the city receives funds to procure these materials, it's not mine. So after this project, you guys can do whatever you want with all the flex posts and the speed cushions, not ours. So through S H A, S H A through Smart Worth America gives a grant to three communities, you guys are one of them. So you guys are the beneficiaries of all these devices, the data is fitting with it, and you can do with it whatever you want throughout the city. But not only is it not going to be permanent, it's not mine, yours.
Yeah, I think we understood that last week. I think for me, I just wouldn't, if, if it was mine, or if the city was the entity putting up the funding to commence this type of effort, the manner in which it is designed on that paper is not something that I would approve expanding city funds for.
Fair enough. Can I go to eastbound? So eastbound US forty approaching Cannon. We are closing the left turn bay, and I believe there was some angst associated with traffic impacts associated with that, fair enough. When we did a field review, we saw tire tracks from large trucks, not just budding the pedestrian ramps, but completely tracking across the entire pedestrian ramp. Very alarming, anybody with a stroller at that pedestrian ramp would have no recourse or no way to avoid a truck that was tracking across the entire ramp. So all we did was use some common tools that we have and some innovative tools that we have. Common tools that we have are simple flex posts, like we're talking about. The innovative tools that we have are the left turn hardening treatments or centerline hardening treatments. It's essentially a rubberized treatment, almost like a flat speed hump type device that you would see in a parking lot. That is meant to be tracked over, so it's very durable. It's really just to ensure that motorists execute a wide left as opposed to a fast, short left. That's to increase safety for pedestrians on the west leg, increase safety for pedestrians on that northwest corner, and, I'm sorry, north leg and northwest corner, and also to slow vehicles when they do execute that left turn. Another thing to note is that there is no conflicting westbound movement at this intersection, of course. So there is no left turn phasing for the eastbound lifts, so as eastbound throughs can proceed through, so can eastbound lifts. So motorists wouldn't necessarily be waiting for a, a motorist trying to find a gap, they would just be waiting for a motorist executing a left turn more safely. And the flex posts, I, I know there's two colors, but it's, it's very straightforward. This is METCD, so this is federal guidance, I, I have no decision on the matter. So any yellow markings, essentially, the leftmost side of a roadway, if there's level, if there's yellow paper markings, it's got to be yellow flex posts associated with it. Anything else would be like. Am I missing anything?
Councilman Karini, I know you had some concerns.
Yeah, I guess a couple of questions, but first I wanted to ask, when city engineer presented this last week, there was, I guess, an anticipation or concern about the timeframe for all of this. Can you, can you just kind of outline the, the timeframe and if there's some deadline for some reason?
Sure, so we want to install this ASAP. Howard County just installed their devices yesterday. The town of Bel Air will install their devices by next week. Really pushing for the city to also install as soon as possible, not for the sake of installing it as soon as possible, but for the sake of getting gleaming useful data and having as much time in the field for us to see how it performs, because it does
Before it snows, which is what Mr. Jim said.
Before it snows, and also just to have as much time in the field for us to really just do investigations, observations, you know, just to assess as much as possible the efficacy of both the innovative devices and the typical devices, and also local impact and feedback. What if they hate it? What if they love it? What if there's something that we need to take back and tweak next time? I mean, there's a lot of useful, valuable information we're going to glean from this.
So one thing I don't think we talked about last week was, just think about this until you mention it. So you said that initially it was going to be westbound, and then the decision was to make, or drive that backwards.
Eastbound, yeah.
Would it be correct to, to assume that whatever modifications are done on one side of Route forty are, in this area, are not necessarily going to affect the traffic pattern and speeds on the other side?
Potentially, yeah, you could say that.
Okay.
There's also different sensitivities of one, westbound entering the city versus eastbound exit.
Right. So I guess my question would be, is it, it sounds like it was, at least for a while, feasible to do one direction versus both? Would it be acceptable to do, to, to collect this data in one direction?
I don't think so, because it wasn't an arbitrary decision to capture westbound as well. Both from the city and in the field investigation, we found quite a few pedestrians crossing. You can see the goat path from eastbound on the north side, just around McDonald's and then crossing directly to the liquor store. That's kind of why we strategically placed the traffic calming devices for the westbound approach. Because if we do all this effort on the eastbound side, and then we have pedestrian fatality on the westbound side, it was all for naught.
So, given that this is all about pedestrian safety, right?
Multimodal.
Which, oh, okay. And which generally, the goal here is, is to slow down traffic. I have a human nature question that may not be in the federal manner. But if traffic is actually traveling slower in this area, and it's a very heavily driven area, both directions, wouldn't that actually encourage higher, more, more, be more encouragement to people to cross Route forty in the middle of the street versus less? Not that traffic speed should be used as a deterrent, but isn't the opposite true?
You're saying if we make it safer, more pedestrians will want
If you know, it's safer, slower, I'm saying just slower.
Not slowing down the traffic, are, are slowing down the traffic before it gets to a point, but I'm confused.
So you're saying if traffic is slower, it will encourage pedestrians to feel more comfortable crossing?
That's what I
Saying where the speed bumps on council members?
Concerned that the human nature is.
Now you're talking about the westbound with speed cushions.
Is that what you're talking about, where you have to slow down on the speed cushions, that it would encourage folks to cross right there?
I think I'm getting you now.
So, the reason I ask about one direction versus the other is because my understanding is more of the issue was on the westbound side of Route forty. You said it wasn't an arbitrary decision, explain that, I understand that. You said it wasn't an arbitrary decision, explain that, I understand that. But yes, I was anticipating that there would be more. Pedestrian. Pedestrian walking across the middle of the road, not at a crosswalk. On the westbound side.
So I'm sorry, I'm cutting you off.
That's all.
So I would say, you know, regardless of whether a pedestrian is crossing legally or illegally, or their level of comfort. You know, the first concern I have is survivability of a crash. I don't think a speed cushion is going to give pedestrians license to. Cross if they would have otherwise not crossed. I would say that what we're doing is trying to increase the survivability of a potential crash.
Okay. And then what other things besides this data study? But what other things can be done in this particular area? To really kind of focus and direct people to use. Kind of, I'll use the term legal crosswalk walks versus strolling out onto Route forty. Which, by the way, is a problem, since you're with the state highway administration, is a problem from there all the way out to Route seventy.
Fair enough. It's a challenge.
With fatalities.
It's a challenge, you know, there's things like, we call them non-traversable medians, it just means fences. Potentially, you could do something like that, but like here and many places in the state of Maryland, if there's a lot of businesses and access points. Those are opportunities for a pedestrian to do whatever. We couldn't fence off an access.
Isn't that the purpose of the study is so that it can, the city engineer and can look at data and that kind of thing and see how it goes? And if it's something that the city, I know you guys, it goes away, but could the city then reinstall it if the data showed?
So you you could go about reinstalling, but you would have to start with the state with a whole different project. So it wouldn't just be a default option to keep it.
So you just get to spend the, spend the money for the study, keep the materials, but then have to go back and.
I'm not saying it's an arduous journey, I'm just saying there's no like default option to keep it. You would have to seek a permit through us, you could use the same concept if you want. I mean, obviously, it wouldn't be as complicated because we did it in partnership, but. You would have to seek out a permit for.
I want to understand that as clearly as possible. So I believe what you're indicating is that. Through this process, you've identified this effort to communicate to the city. That the state will invest. State funds. On the state's road for temporary improvements. That will become the city's ownership to determine how permanent we want to own those on the state's road.
Towards the end, they're kind of veered away.
Okay.
It's a temporary project where you will own the devices that are utilized on a state roadway.
Okay.
At the end of the project, the devices are yours.
Right.
The application is not meant to be permanent, it's a temporary design.
May maybe you lost me again.
Sorry, yeah.
So.
You can't leave them there.
So what happens at the end of the period, we, are we responsible to take them out?
We will remove it, but you will own it, so you'll store it wherever you want.
Okay.
You know, after that, hands off.
So then. If if you've made this temporary improvement to do this analysis. Who then is the responsible party that says, hey, that worked really good? We're going to do this of a permanent way now, and we're going to fund that.
So there is no mechanism or. Protocol to make it permanent. It's really up to the city or the locality if they choose to pursue that.
I'm confused.
Let me add one more.
Okay, go ahead.
The speed cushion is not an approved device in the state of Maryland, it's not something you can use typically wherever you want.
Correct.
I brought it in for this project because I wanted to pilot it, it's part of our M P L process. Part of the M P L process is data collection as well, and this and the town of Bel Air are great locations where we're going to glean. A lot of data associated with speed efficacy, speed before and after data to see how it really impacts traffic. So that being said, not only is there not a protocol to make this permanent, you couldn't make a speed cushion permanent on a state roadway yet.
So I guess, again, I'm, I think I'm even more confused now because the state. Is going to expend funds to install a permanent thing. On the state's road.
That's correct.
To to see how it works. And then give the stuff after it takes it out of that place to the city to own. But then not come back if it works great and put the stuff in permanently.
So just to be clear. When we remove these materials, it's not to say that we're packing up and walking away. There's quite a few initiatives already ongoing. There's already the H E P N P O, H I N study, and we have our own pedestrian safety action plan cohorts. And this location is part of cohort two point oh, so it's slated for planning in the future, the near future.
So. Once the stuff's gone. What is the state's plan to put the stuff back in in a permanent nature? If they believe that what they've done. Fixes a permanent good.
So like I was saying, so the pedestrian safety action plan can gleam a lot of information and data from this, which would incorporate into a permanent project.
I'd I'd like to add here.
That we have to apply for?
No, 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 that's an S H A.
Oh, I thought you said earlier that if we really liked what was there, we can apply to the state.
Say for a permit.
These are two different questions, she was, you were asking if you could take this exact concept and make it permanent, I said there's not. Yeah, you would have to go through a different process. You were asking what would we glean from this and take action upon in the future once we remove it?
At this location?
This exact location.
Uh huh.
Is part of our pedestrian safety action plan cohort two point oh.
So this is, this is what I'm taking away from this, and please correct me, I, I view this positively. Okay, so we've got from, say we put it in next week until October, beginning of Oc, or beginning of November, okay? To to have these in place, if it gnarles up traffic, we say, eh, not going to do that, that's terrible, right? If it works, great, then you guys have data and maybe we could see something come out of it in the long run. At the end of the day, we get improved crosswalks, and we get some of these materials that we could repurpose other places for traffic calming, right?
Correct.
So win-win in my book, I, I don't understand that.
Could I, I'm missing the negative. Could I answer really quick? Jim, I'm not sure if that, if it was before you as the engineer, or if this was even, but Bur Hands, on Bur Hands, right there where Stop and Go was. I seen those cones, I'm not sure if that's even, but they were like the orange or whatever. And then they went away, but one of the things that I did see was I seen a lot of people, you know, still turning, breaking them up, I seen people still crossing. Right along there, was that something like a study in?
It was called the George Street Study, and we were trying to figure out some way to address. Similar things that we're seeing here on the highway with pedestrians crossing, not at the crosswalks, but halfway down going to buyer's quick buy.
Seven hundred twenty-six people a day. Just a number.
Yeah, so but it was part of a, it was part of a study, and we, we put those flex posts out in the middle of the road. Similar to what we're doing on proposing to do on the edge of the highway to try to channelize things. And to try to prevent some maneuvers that really shouldn't be happening there.
So. Speaking to the maneuvers, because that was an additional point, and you, you had mentioned earlier that the path that folks choose. Is somewhere in the vicinity of the area going through the McDonald's, right?
Uh, just around east of.
Right, east of it, right, the, the main thoroughfare. So one of the things that I had inquired in looking at these proposed eastbound improvements is if I'm the person in the left. And I want to get. North. And I don't make that turn, how many people or has there been any expectation? Or any estimation for how many people are going to go down? A hair further, and right where you're saying all this pedestrian activity is happening. Going to cross through the McDonald's parking lot and then shoot out onto the westbound lane?
So I. I don't have any expectation that a motorist will not execute a left turn if they desire to turn left, it will not be closed. However, if they were confused and they chose to use McDonald's as a bypass. At that point, they would have executed a left turn legally into a McDonald's. Illegally trespassed McDonald's and then turned left onto westbound US forty. But that left turn would be west of the speed cushions and west of the westbound ingress. So I mean, regardless, I would say that that's not necessarily an unsafe. Maneuver, but it's not advised, and we're not going to restrict eastbound left turns on North Cannon, we're not restricting. Any turns.
That turn to go into C V S is already a one-way, it has a do not enter.
Yeah.
So they can't. Come out that way, is that what you're talking about?
No, if I'm the motorist and I don't want to wait here to go north on Cannon, I'm going to go down here and go straight through.
You can't get through. I think that's a one-way, right?
You can definitely go into McDonald's and come out the other side.
Yeah.
Yeah. On the C V S side.
That's pretty much a straight shot.
So McDonald's is kind of further up here than what this label is, but it's up here where bottleneck's a little more, you technically could.
My, my counterpoint would be, even if they did that, the speed cushions would make that left turn even safer. I mean, everything that we're doing is safety oriented, so that, there's nothing here that would harm anything, it would only.
I'm hearing it as a study, and to collect data.
Just here for the first meeting, but I'm not seeing the, you know. That one of it.
It's a, this is national attention, by the way, on this, so this is a national. Program, Smart Growth America is a national entity, they are partnering with various states. We are one of like six, I think, and of those six states. We have selected three locations, one of them happens to be in the city of Hagerstown, so I think it's a great opportunity.
So one other quick question on the process. The city applies for, presumably gets a grant from Smart Growth America. Of twenty-five thousand dollars, I think it was, to pay for the devices, right?
Certainly getting the grant.
Which, which is why the city would then retain ownership of the devices. The state will install the devices and remove the devices at the end of the study. Right?
They will be removed, I think the installation will be done in partnership with the city.
Yeah, it's, it's mostly like the flex posts are going to be installed by state highway and their forces. And the, and the speed cushions and the hardened centerlines, the city's going to do a couple of side things. There are a couple of signs, existing signs that need to be bagged or covered up. There's some new signs in, in advance of the speed cushions that we may help out with.
So where I was getting was the markings. So there could be a lot of paint markings changed in this whole area to address all of this. What happens to those markings at the end of the study?
It would get removed.
Who, by whom? By the state.
They go take it all out.
And then put it back the way it was.
Yes.
That wasn't.
Councilwoman Burnett?
I wasn't here last week, so sorry if this is a done a question, but let's say this moves forward and it gets approved at regular session. How would the public know about this, whether it be any type of signage or communication is going out to everyone to say, hey, this is new? Slow down.
Yeah. So there's, there would be a couple of things. Just from the city's standpoint, we have a webpage ready to go that could go live that has information about the, the project if we, if we choose to move forward. Certainly can do. Social media releases on this as well, and then partnering with M dot. They have also set up a portal for all three of these project sites in Maryland that, that puts all this information about these quick builds in one place. And we can provide links to that page so that anyone would be able to see, not just Hagerstown's, but Bel Air's or Howard County's plan.
What parts of this will be permanent at the end of the day?
Sure, so all the crosswalk upgrades, permanent, continental crosswalk markings, we're not going to touch the inlaid brick crosswalks. They're decorative, there's no reason for us to tamper with them. Westbound US forty approaching Cannon, we are installing permanent arrow-only arrows for the left turns. There's no reason for those to be temporary, those are going to be permanent, so those are just upgrades to the existing westbound left turn lane.
Okay. Maybe more specific. What on the eastbound at Cannon and Washington will be permanent?
Just nothing. Crosswalk markings, the only thing that's permanent is crosswalk, and the arrow only arrow left turns for westbound US forty, everything else is temporary. Literally, everything else is temporary.
The left bound, the, the left arrow in the left lane.
Yeah. So westbound, basically after the speed cushions, the leftmost lane is a left lane drop once you get the cannon. So we're just upgrading that left lane drop with arrow-only arrow paper markings, it's a standard thing for S H A, there's no reason for it to be temporary.
Me and my daughter were headed out a couple of days ago, and for the first time in a very long time, there was a car that turned. Onto Cannon from going out on eastbound, but didn't go over into the turning lane. And because it was, I seen it, and maybe I was more focused on seeing it because we had just had the talk the week before. But the reason why they were still, they were over in that non-turning lane was because of how big their, their car was. And so they stayed in that lane and they turned. And I, I seen that, and I was like, wow, that did seem like it was easier for that car to get around than if you come up and you're in a, I just. Again, it's probably because we just talked about it that it happened like that, that I was able to see that car actually make a safe turn. From not even using the third lane over, which is the supposed to be turning lane, which kind of makes it tight if you have a big car to go up and then cut.
Yep, that's why, I haven't gone into all the details, but that's why we have closed, proposed to close the leftmost. Lane for eastbound US forty approaching Cannon because of the dangerous sweeping left turns tracking onto the pedestrian ramps.
I seen it with my eyes, and I was like, oh, wow, I've never, I've never really noticed right there.
When you do that, I assume you're going to convert that to parking.
No. We thought about it similar to the temporary crosswalk idea. Once you put in temporary parking, how are you going to take it out, people are going to just abuse it, confused by it, et cetera.
So. So when I drive up. To the area that you're talking about, Mayor. The left lane that you're saying is no longer going to be the left turn lane. That won't be the left turn lane and it won't be parking?
Correct.
What will preclude the person from getting in that left and turning?
Flex posts.
It, it has a line of flex posts along the edge.
Okay.
Could see them off.
I think this printout probably doesn't show. Sorry about that. I can give you guys a PDF version.
Hey, you guys.
I mean, this is one to provide enough data. To support pedestrian safety, I'm fine with that.
I think that last week, just because you guys weren't here, if I could real quick, the concern was how quickly that had to, to be done. But Jim answered that, as soon as he sat down at the table, he said that because of weather, they try to connect enough data. Because that was one of the concerns from last week was why do we have to make the decision and do it so quickly? And then another one was on who would own it and how, those types of things.
There's one question, Councilmember Burnett. Soon as I, we confirm, once you guys approve potentially. I will be sending out a press release immediately, I sent out a press release already for Howard County. Sent a press release, or will be sending out for Bel Air tomorrow. Until I get confirmation that everything is okay in the city, we'll send out a press release for that as well. As well as the portal, of course, and whatever the city does to complement that. I will note one more thing, this is, this program is near and dear to the secretary. It's heart, so tomorrow and the day after tomorrow, we have events in the Howard County, Complete Streets Leadership Academy location. This location will get a lot of attention as well if it should come to fruition.
Well, and I'd say too. Part of this is we need to execute a grant agreement with Smart Growth America and can do that. If the council wants to move ahead, can do that at the regular session, meaning at the end of the month. From a procurement standpoint, though, I need to, I need to start procurement immediately. In advance of the regular session, if we're going to, if the thought is that we're going to go ahead with this project.
So yes for me.
So yes for me. Oh, I'm sorry. I mean, yes, but, again, I wasn't here last week. Public safety, was that discussed, it was slowed down. Chunks.
Were you asking about signing?
No, like the flex was called?
Speed cushions or the flex posts?
Flex posts.
What about? I don't, I don't understand the question, I'm sorry.
Nevermind, forget it.
But the speed.
Forget it, forget it, forget it.
Sure, 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 but I will just say.
Because I'm picturing something else.
There's advanced warning signing for the speed cushions, there's, you can see the bump warning signs for the westbound approach. There's also bump ahead, advanced warning signing, and we're also going to provide supplemental reduced speed ahead warning signs, people certainly are aware that it's twenty-five mile per hour, so.
Just wondering tangentially to this, who, who owns and installs the white tubular? Markers further up on the eastbound lane that made the shoulder into a sidewalk?
That's state.
It's a state highway.
But it predates me, it was a part of the project.
All right, we, we good?
Yeah, I know. Yeah, I know.
So Jim just say he had to start the procurement. Was that something you would need from, like the body beforehand or?
I don't know. I mean, I need to start immediately. It is going to be, it's all reimbursement, you know, so that's not an expenditure of funds that we're not going to get back. I just need to, I need to go. Joe's, Joe's been hounding me to to make this happen. So I, I, if we're going to go ahead with this, I can't delay any longer.
You guys reimbursement, you heard that part and all that. Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Hope you enjoyed yourself here today, Jim. Remote work.
All right, can I, oh, I was about to say, I was about to say, can I have community health mayor council stakeholder discussion? We're talking, it's about community health, the mayor and council stakeholder discussion. So any of our stakeholders that would like to join us, if there's not enough chairs, we can, there's a chair right here that can go. And then there's a chair beside, oh, yeah, you can pull up Eddie right there as well.
If I could, in the kind of a sense of introduction to this topic, Senator Quarterman sent a letter to us dated July twenty fourth where he falsely claimed our city is in crisis and under siege. One of the items he identified was number six, call on the public works department and the Washington County Health Department to clean up the core of the city, literally clean it up. There are needles and feces all over the place. Should the health department continue to promote and provide needles in our community, which is a state law? They should be held accountable by the city and should be the ones cleaning it up daily, not the city or citizens.
What number was that, Councilmember?
Number six.
That was number six. Thank you.
I just wanted to identify that as we discussed last week. Councilmember Alshire's comments was we should address the senator's concerns and issues. So while I don't personally agree with his characterization of the issue, I think as Councilmember Alshire said, it's important for us as a mayor and council to understand the issues and understand what the reality is. And so pleased that we're joined by members of the Washington County Health Department and leading the health office.
Yeah, thank you guys so much for being here. Councilmember Burnett, you just made the job so much easier, but thank you for being here and at the meeting yesterday as well. I think that it is important for the public to know that this was number six on the letter in which we're addressing. And we will address the letter with agencies, piece by piece, for the public and also for the media that's here. We will address them individually. So welcome. Thank you.
Just a couple of points of clarity before we get into like the actual harm reduction program. I know that, you know, as a community, we obviously continue to have a pretty significant behavioral health issue. You know, mental health and substance use disorder, specifically with substance use disorder, which is under our purview at the health department. We have really robust community partnerships. You know, it's not just the health department that's addressing the issue. To that point, and knowing that we still have a long way to go, just received data yesterday that if you compare our first six months of this year with last year, we've had a fifty nine percent reduction in our overdose fatalities. So I know that there's a perception out there that, you know, nothing ever changes and what we're doing doesn't work. Well, we've had almost sixty percent reduction in basically saving people's lives. So again, we still have a long way to go. But the things that are in place now are working and are keeping people alive. The other is that the greater substance use disorder issue is going to be here. And I said this when we were here three, four weeks ago, until we collectively come together as a community. You know, it's not just the health department issue. It's not just a, you know, nonprofit issue. It's like everybody collectively working together, moving forward together in lockstep. And I would emphasize with key influential people and entities in our community also supporting the initiative. Because I mean, I've been at this job for thirty one years, been to many meetings, many task forces and the whole nine. And if you don't have people and entities of influence, it's going to fizzle. It just is what it is. So the only way to really hold people accountable is to have that influence is and and to have those people at the table and in it for the long haul. And then the third point, and we'll kick into harm reduction, is that with all that said, harm reduction really is an infectious disease program, prevention of infectious disease. Secondary to that is, you know, getting people into treatment and on all that good stuff. But it really is focused on preventing the spread of infectious diseases, mainly HIV. And I think that Councilman Alshire has pointed that out on several occasions, but I just wanted to make that clarifying point again. Because a lot of people that I talk to are under this misnomer of like, well, you're not getting people in treatment. You're not doing this. This program really isn't for that. That's a secondary objective or a secondary goal. So anyway, just a really quick, how did we get into this? Why are we doing it? All that good stuff. Back in, I believe it was twenty sixteen, we were approached by the Maryland Department of Health Infectious Disease Program. At the time, they were, CDC was just coming off of a significant outbreak in Indiana. Scott County, Indiana, Indiana, which is demographically at the time, very similar to Washington County. Significant rise in HIV cases, you know, the whole nine, all the issues that we're experiencing now. One of the things that they that they did was implemented a syringe service program. To save a long story, cases went down. They did get people into treatment. It's really meeting people where they are and all that good stuff. So we were approached by the state, the CDC on the heels of that had done a vulnerability study. And we were in that vulnerable area, but at the time, it was, it was mainly our neighbors to the south. It was Berkeley and Morgan Counties in West Virginia. Again, very transient commuter population here, especially even with that risk individuals. Working with our opioid intervention team at the time, which is now opioid prevention, overdose prevention team. We decided to move in the direction of, you know, hey, we've got to do something, you know, we don't want to be a Scott County. So we moved forward with having a harm reduction program inclusive of a syringe service component to that. We understand, you know, from the get-go that the potential for a needle litter was there. It's something that we've watched and fretted over over the years. There have been some discussions with you guys over the years. Not literally you guys, some of you guys, but the council over the years and with city administration over that, which obviously has kind of come to a head now with the letter and the subsequent meetings that we're attending. We continue to feel as though it is a needed program. Our intention is to continue to move forward with it. But we also recognize and can share the concerns about, you know, if the community is concerned about seeing needles and finding needles and and all that stuff, that that's certainly something that we needed to really take a look at. I know that there are several communities across the country that have done away with their needle programs. I don't want to steal any of Dr. G's thunder, but they've seen some subsequent ill effects of that kind of back into, back into the mix, back into the frying pan, so to speak, with where they had come from. So just so everyone's clear, and I don't necessarily know that this was a question. I'm not accusing the council of anything. But our intent is to continue moving the the program forward, obviously tweaking it specifically with some, you know, more robust needle disposal, which Vicky will talk about here in a minute, and education specifically for, not necessarily to the community, but the individuals that are in the program.
Can I, can I ask a question just to throw on the table as we discussed? And how can we make sure that we take care of addressing the spread of infectious diseases? And, right? Because I don't think that this has to be a win or lose situation and address the issues that's happening within people's personal property, those types of things. Also, if you guys could please tell us what the, what law enforcement can and can't do? If they were to, because I get this question a lot, a lot from the community. If they see someone that is actively shooting up, they call law enforcement. Can you please just say what, if you know what law enforcement can or cannot do when they get to, if they get to that, that location in reference to what policies or whatever is in place? And the reason why I'm asking specifically of that is that I don't want the public to think that there's a favoritism or there's just an addressing one type of issue. Because there's the issue of public safety that is not violent space, but it absolutely is to the condition of what some people are seeing when they walk out their front door. And so if you could just help me understand, and maybe that's around the programming and the robust rollout, right? Or working all together, but how can we do both? How can we address that, make sure we meet people where they're at, but the same thing when it comes to property owners and public safety?
So from the standpoint of your, your first question, I think with property owners, if I'm understanding it, what you're asking is what can we do about individuals trespassing?
No, no, I'm just, I'm asking because that, I think the health department, it sounds to a lot of folks that the health department only cares about, and I'm not saying that's the case. I just want to, I want to put it out there for the public that's listening, that the health department only cares about the people that are suffering. And in this, in the illness and also making sure to protect them. But how can we make sure that the public understands that the health department is, and what can we do to make sure? And that's not saying it's your responsibility, right? I agree. It's an entire community. It takes all of us. But what I don't want is the public to feel like they they have no, no, no way to to express their concerns around what's happening outside. I also don't want other folks to feel as though there's not any consequences to just respecting people's personal property and safety when it comes to this elected body.
So I'll, I'll start off and then I'll have, Vicky can chime in because she's closer to that than I am. But we certainly understand the need to respect individuals in the community regardless of whether they're an active addiction, a homeowner that doesn't have any behavioral health needs, you know. We certainly want a safe and and healthy environment for everyone, which is why we've constantly, over the years, really, you know, look at the program, what do we need to reevaluate? It's why we're sitting here today. You know, Vicky can talk about some of the conversations that she's had with you guys, in particular, Councilman Perini, with some of the new initiatives that we're kicking off and and those sorts of things. So just so everybody's clear, you know, our concern is truly for the entire community. You know, the harm reduction program doesn't just protect individuals in the program. It protects your, protects your community also. And some of the initiatives that we're.
I I think that's some of the concern coming in from the community, if it's not being done appropriately, that it's not protecting the safety of the community. For instance, kids getting ready to go back to school if they're, and I know that there's, we've talked about it, right? And so I'm not doing this to, I'm doing it for the public to be able to clearly understand and that we're having this conversation. School's getting ready to start. The safety of the community is not going to be, you know, if the needles aren't being returned. Or and how, how can the public and all of us make sure that we're holding people accountable that do not want to go into treatment, but constantly keep breaking the law by being on people's property? Because I think that that's one of the things that is a, is a huge concern.
So we don't have any control over whether, from a criminal justice perspective, if someone's trespassing on someone else's property, the health department doesn't have any.
I understand that. That's our job. I just.
But as far as disposed, needle disposal and needle litter, I'll let Vicky come in on that, what we're doing with that.
Well, I think one of the things that we've done is talk to the participants about respect and that that's not what harm reduction looks like. Because harm reduction looks very different from being on someone's property, being disrespectful, littering and things like that. So we've gone out and when we go out for collection, we've taken pictures and we've put them up in the rooms. So we're having conversation when they come to the health department about that. We've also, and I, you know, when people call us and, you know, kind of good and bad press, this has been kind of good press for us because people are calling us more, so we're having more conversations. So instead of it going on social media to be made fun of or negative comments, we've had people call us and we've been able to go out and have conversations with them and say, hey, if this happens again, call us. If they're standing on your doorstep, call us. We'll come out and talk to them and move them away and have a plan. We've also suggested, made suggestions, you know, maybe you should get lights that are, what do you call it? Motion lights. And she said the neighbor had done that and she was going to ask her boss if they could do that too. So like having that conversation, because like Earl said, it is about community safety. So we're here. I mean, we are here and we've even increased our outreach and don't have a problem, you know, going out. As far as like trespassing and people who are destroying property, those are all divertible problems that can be brought to us. We have law enforcement assisted diversion. We have a crisis team. We have no problem going out and working with those individuals.
And how would the public be able to reach you? Is it straight through the website or the?
Actually, they can call the main line and it'll come straight to me. And so we probably would enroll them in the lead program if that was something that we thought was appropriate. And that is like discretionary funds, so we have a lot of more, we have more opportunity to get them services that they need.
What's the number?
Two, four, O, three, one, three, 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 one, zero. Do you want me to continue or do you?
Sure, go ahead. I was waiting to see if there were any questions.
No, I just wanted to throw it out there for the discussion. Thank you for answering, but those are the the concerns that are coming in.
You want to?
I could say a few words just, just to, I mean, it's just. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm Deanna Gaviria. I'm the medical director. I'm the deputy health officer and medical director. Just, just sort of reinforcing, reinforcing what Mr. Stoner has said about the infectious disease aspect of this. You know, this is really just one of our tools in HIV prevention, not just HIV hepatitis transmission, but particularly HIV, I think, because of the Scott County experience, knowing that that that, those situations can quickly get out of hand if there aren't prevention strategies in place. We have a prep program, which is daily medication for prevention of HIV infection. We have reaching out and doing early detection and treatment. There's a, there's a phrase in in infection control that that treatment is prevention. If you treat people, you block, you stop that transmission. So we are very active with that. We're working in the hub with an STI clinic doing testing. Behavioral health does a ton of testing at their facility and in street outreach, as does our case management program, our HIV case management program does a lot of testing. And then syringe services and all these programs work together. Syringe services has been a tremendous tool in HIV prevention. We, we know that that large percentages of people who are diagnosed with HIV report injection drug use. You can't usually, usually you can't say it was acquired because of this risk factor, it was required because of that risk factor. But of the people living with HIV in the county, seventy five percent reported injection drug use at the time of diagnosis. So it's clearly a huge risk factor. And and I think there's a perception that if there's an outbreak, it stays within a particular risk community, but it doesn't. It didn't in Scott County. It, it, it is a community problem. It's not just a small sector of the community. And to Earl's comments, and this may be overstepping, but it is true that in places where they have curtailed or suspended their syringe service programs, particularly in our neighboring state of West Virginia, in Cavill County where Huntington is, in Kanawha County where Charleston is, they, in Cavill, they severely curtailed the program. And in Kanawha, they were, there were so many restrictions that they eventually just suspended the program. Both of those counties had significant CDC-involved outbreaks of HIV within a year after they, after they cut back on their syringe services. So we know real, real world examples that. So we know real, real world examples that, that these programs really are important for infectious disease prevention.
I have a question. First of all, thank you very much for the focused outreach, especially in the area that I live and, and, and I appreciate the social media announcements that you're here and the things that you're doing and, and all of that helps tremendously. Do you notice that it is the same individuals that you're helping in the harm reduction program? And then they come back and they're still kind of in the program? Because what I see is it almost is a new group of individuals around the Goodwill, around Reach on North Prospect. And then, so they're there for a while and then, and then the, and then it shifts, like the groups shift.
It's like it migrates.
And I don't know if it goes to another part, if they go to another part of the county or the city, but it's like this different groups of, of people. And they're there for a while and then it kind of goes away, what, what do you see?
I think it's hard to say, we see the same people for a couple of years. You know, you have that handful of individuals, can't name names, but everybody knows them, you know? And you do see some fluctuation. And I always ask first, what, how, what brought you here? Well, I moved up here to be with a boyfriend or, and I know we had talked about the treatment issue. Very rarely, if I find somebody that's stuck here because they were kicked out of treatment, I send them back. Really, I do, like if you need a, I sent somebody back to Baltimore and I've had people come to the office and I'm like, you don't need to be here, I have funding for transportation, I just send them back, because it's not. It's, I mean, we don't want, we might not have all the funding all the time. But, you know, when you find somebody and you have that funding, why would they be sitting on the streets of Hagerstown when they can go back to Baltimore where they live and have a home?
That, that's another thing that, I'm glad you said that, because that's another thing that people are saying is happening is that someone's bringing and dumping a bunch of folks here. And then if they get kicked out of the houses, that there's no way for them to get back to their location or if they're from Baltimore or whatever. So thank you for saying that, if you guys do run into someone like that, that you would help them, you know, if the treatment didn't work out here, that you would help them get.
And a lot of places do that, I mean, and also I think there's a misunderstanding that people are kicked out. Sometimes they leave on their own. And, and I know we had talked to Scott about this, we send people out of town. When people come to us, whoever has a bed, if they're willing to go, we try to get them there. So it's not like we're always placing people just in our neighborhood, we're placing them in other neighborhoods too, you know? And trust me, they are very resourceful and they usually come back real quick if they want to.
I think it's very important to note that it is extremely, just because there is a person that needs treatment, if it is three thirty on a Friday, or if it's four o'clock on a Wednesday, it is likely not going to happen.
Yeah.
And that is like very, very important to realize.
Yeah, that, that's definitely.
It typically takes a long time.
It does.
In many methods of, they may have overdosed several times and heard a message from a peer over at Meredith's. Maybe street outreach, maybe a personal experience before someone really, and, and typically it's right after a crisis. That's when you're really, because again, an hour later.
Yeah.
You've lost that opportunity for most people.
That's right.
That's important.
Well, and I think too, I, you know, and like I said last night, it just takes so long. And I know we want answers and we want somebody to be well right away, but it really is about building that trust, having that relationship, because all the systemic issues that have come before, we've got in front of this person.
I think that the, and I'm, some other folks talk, but I think that for, for me, that building the trust is definitely, you know, the most important thing. But as Councilwoman McIntyre said, if you're seeing different people and different faces, I walk a lot. And I mean, there's a couple of different spots that I see. And it's difficult for me to, to build a new relationship or say hello, like constantly if there's new faces throughout. And so I just wanna, again, I don't want, it's hard because I, I'm seeing so many, so many new faces. And, and shifting, like I'll see them up towards Goodwill. But then if, if that doesn't, if it moves, then they're down on North Locust and between Randolph and, you know, and those could be the same faces, but I'm also seeing brand new groups of people. So that's hard to, to kind of build relationships.
What I, I mean, if you wanna know about, I usually take someone that is there all the time. Like I have a couple of people that I have relationships with and they are kind of like that warm handoff person. So, and like I have even, one person has come out with us for a little while on Friday evenings. Like I've asked her to come and she's in the street.
That's good.
So she goes with us and to say, well, this is my caseworker, but I'm not. She's okay, yeah. So, yeah, it does take a while to build relationships. But I think, you know, one of the things I think is very important, especially when we talk about harm reduction, well, a couple of things. One, it does not promote drug use, that is not what we're doing and we do not accept drug use. I mean, that is very clear, that is not something harm reduction is about. It is about keeping people safe, right? We're not saying go out, do drugs, I think that's sort of a misperception. And the syringes are only such a tiny, tiny part of actually what we do with that person. Unfortunately, that's what looks, gets attention. You know, if you looked at all the services that we do, wound care, sexual health, hygiene stuff, HIV testing, Hep C testing, I mean, it is referrals. I mean, we did three hundred and seventy-one referrals last year. And that's only people that walk in that room, that doesn't mean on outreach, that doesn't mean our peers. So there are so many other things than our harm reduction program that like gets people into treatment. It just takes a while. But now we're gonna take on something new with Peter. You wanna talk about?
I seen.
Oh, sorry.
I only have a couple of comments. So, I mean, obviously for me, the, you know, I recognize each of the points that were made in this communication. And as Councilmember Perini points out, you know, obviously we invited you folks here to talk about point number six. And so, a couple of things first before I get into that. One is, I completely respect your comment that everybody has to be on the same page and at the same table. And so the first thing I'll say is, you know, we did invite, in addition to yourselves, folks from Meredith's to participate in this discussion today. I know that they declined to attend. And for me, as a citizen, the difficulty I have with that is this very new sort of part of learning this process, that this is really a medical issue. That you're not out literally handing out needles and going, hey folks, you know, we know you're drug users, go use drugs. You're really looking at the back end of this and saying, what impact is this going to have on the broader community? On the medical side, that we can glean from the impacts that it has had in other communities on the medical side. So I really appreciate you attending today and in speaking to that issue. Because I think as just an average citizen, trying to sort of push out all of the rhetoric that you hear and see and read on, on social media and in all the facets about the subject matter, like that has resonated well with me. But in this letter, it says, it uses the word should. However, should the health department continue to promote and provide needles in our community? And by the way, you guys did a, a great job yesterday in answering a number of questions. And I tried to write down the stuff as an average citizen, what I would wanna hear and take away from that discussion. And it's completely unfortunate, I'm so glad that you're here in front of us and in front of our citizens, that was my goal. Because having a meeting, you know, in a private setting over at the library on three thirty in the afternoon, the citizens aren't hearing the, the, the appropriate facts and figures and things that you're saying. And I think that that's even more so important in this day and age of, of the immediacy in which we can transfer and communicate and miscommunicate information. So you are an arm of the state agency, right?
Maryland Department of Health.
You're, you're, you're the local arm of that sort of.
We're, we're technically not a unit of state government, but governance wise, in essence, yes.
That's right.
Yes.
And so when it says should here, I wanna make sure I understand that word should. Because it clearly is indicated that if you wanted to decide tomorrow to stop providing needles, you could tell the state to go pound sand, we're not going to do this program. But you are certified and directed under state.
We are not directed by the state to have the program. We are strongly encouraged to have a program.
Okay.
But we are not mandated.
By the state.
By the state.
I think those are completely good things to learn.
Yeah.
So, and you were the only certified entity, agency in this county that provides that.
Correct.
Service.
Correct. So to your point, just for people watching, in order to give out syringes in this case to individuals who have substance use disorders through a harm reduction program, you have to go through a certification with the Maryland Department of Health, which we obviously have done that. But you must be certified by the Maryland Department of Health to hand out syringes, clean syringes obviously, to individuals through a harm reduction program.
And, and we go through a grant process yearly, all of our staff have to be trained.
Through the state.
Through the state, through the Centers for Harm Reduction. We have TA calls, I, I mean, and it's reviewed every single year to see, to make sure that we're doing it according to the guidelines of which the state has set up. And we were the second one in the state next to Baltimore and now I think we're at twenty-four are on board. There is a Maryland Syringe Service Advisory Board, which I actually sit on. And they review all of, I don't review my own, but they review all the new applications and they talk about the laws and.
For the twenty-four jurisdictions in the state that participate in this.
And it will be all of them. I think right now, there's only Garrett, but Garrett's being shared with Allegheny right now and, and Carol just finished their application.
So. And to be clear, all of those harm reduction programs, all of them don't distribute clean needles.
Right, but it's still through.
All of them don't, because Garrett County does not.
Garrett doesn't have one, they get it from Allegheny.
Allegheny.
Yeah, everyone that I've, everyone that I've read does do syringes. Garrett doesn't have a, a program, Allegheny's going to Garrett.
Okay.
Because of the increase in HIV cases.
Okay.
So the portion of your participation in that meeting, Paul had indicated, it says, I don't want to get rid of the needle program, that was the first comment. But he talked about interest in a one for one exchange and you're very good in explaining, you know, one for one exchange isn't, you know, addressing the medical side of the, the infectious process, which is what the goal is. But I did like the two comments that you pointed out, and I think again, as a citizen, this is just me as a citizen sort of listening. You said in last year, twenty twenty-three, twenty-two thousand needles went out, twelve thousand were basically collected. This year, sixteen thousand went out, you've got nineteen thousand back so far. So. And Earl, you made a very good comment in response to that, that this is a, a lesson learned process. That this isn't, you know, something you pull out of the box and it works perfect day one. You're addressing the issues of the program, how it operates, the accountability associated with it. And so I think that that was very good. The other question that was raised, Paul says that we need a program in place to proactively pick up needles. And you said very clearly, you already provide that program on a daily basis. Doesn't matter what day of the week, you even said Friday nights. If somebody calls, and then Earl kind of touched on the thing that I'm gonna let Councilmember Perini touch on. I know that you also advocated for disposal boxes, I know that that is a, you know, a bit of a lightning rod in the case within the community. And I wanna go further, because I think it touches on the point our police chief made, and I think it goes to the mayor's question earlier, that HPD can't be the, the continual sort of cleanup crew of, of this item. And I think it speaks to your comment that, that everybody has to be at the table. And then another question was raised, which I thought was good. Paul said, you know, how do you keep tabs on the repeat users? Meaning the folks that continually come into your office to, to, you know, obtain clean needles? You know, what is the process there? And you said five hundred and ninety individuals came in for needles in the last year. And of those, three hundred and seventy asked for help through the Washington Health Department. So, you know, this misnomer out there that, that people just come in, they grab them and they cruise, you know, and that you're not, you know, sort of addressing that at the front door, so to speak. So that, those were good numbers.
Well, I think too, when, when we talk about our, our program is evolving and learning, we have really good staff. I mean, when you first start and we're trying to train and figure out the way it goes, people would come in, and I'll be honest with you, they'd come in, grab their stuff and go. And now I've moved my data, my, my office is right beside the room. They will spend a good fifteen to twenty minutes, sometimes I have to knock on the door and say, are you okay? So like my staff is like learning the process of keeping people engaged, you know? So it's an art, like peer support services. And we, we work daily to try to improve quality of care, period. It's just like a healthcare office, I guess you would say. And we talk about what can we do differently, how can we engage them, even if it's candy? I mean, and I will invite all of you, please feel free, if you wanna do a tour, we could walk you through what it looks like in our offices. From the moment they come in the door, we wanna make sure that they're engaged. Because we know we have to keep them engaged, to keep them there and to, to, to build that trust.
And that's also one of the points of outreach also. It's not just literally walking down the street and like, what do you need? I mean, every touch point in that process is education, educational opportunity. And, and ultimately a trust and rapport build with that individual to slowly get them through that process. Because the harm reduction program is based on a scientific model. It's, it's, it's based on the stages of change model and pre-contemplation and all that kind of stuff. So, you know, it really is meeting the individual where they are, and they could be anywhere in that. Now, most often, they're in that pre-contemplation, but you try to move them along those, through those stages. And ultimately, while you're keeping them safe and reducing harm, getting them into treatment.
So, to the, to the effect that this letter was conveyed to Mayor and Council, wasn't conveyed to you folks or the other entities that are clearly partners in this process of, of a broader issue, you know, the question in each one of these entities that we meet with is, okay, here's what you do, here's the issue, what's the city's role? So that's sort of how I'm approaching each of this. And so it was good for me to hear yesterday that, one, our role is certainly, you know, in partnering with, you know, identifying where these issues exist and engaging you in that cleanup and accountability effort. But two, I, I did find it interesting, you already mentioned it, that I took away from the meeting yesterday, which was the alleys. And the issue with lighting in the alleys and, and individuals basically looking for places they feel safe, you know, in, in dark areas to, to, to do this. And so I, I sort of took away from that, that, you know, that, that's an area where, you know, the city could engage ideas to address that. Because I think that speaks directly to our residents, especially in the residential areas that, that feel most directly impacted by it. So I appreciate those, those comments.
Anybody else?
I did have a question for you. Yeah, I did have a question for you. The one point the Councilmember Alshire made is, is my big takeaway from yesterday's meeting. We hear it, I'm sure you hear it, that the needle program is why there are so many needles, right? We're finding so many needles on the streets. The, the, the numbers that you guys collect for the number of needles distributed versus the number of needles that have been returned, that returned number, is that actually people that are bringing needles back to the health department? Or is that a number of needles that's being collected?
Both. So when we go out and collect, we bring back what we've collected and we put it in a one spot. So it's all together. And people bring needles that aren't using substances, diabetics, women who have done infertility, like they just wanna get rid of them properly.
So I just wanted to point that out, that I, that number was eye opening for me yesterday. The fact that, and I don't know if you still have that handy, but I wanted to reiterate that, that the amount of needles that you've distributed and the amount that you have collected right now is way more on the return than it is on the distributed.
It's about three thousand, I hope.
Yes, sir. So I just thank you for that.
Before Councilmember Perini does his thing and shares with us this new thing, do you guys tell the folks that you're coming in, whether it's for harm reduction or for, you know, to get treatments? whether it's for harm reduction or for, um, you know, uh, to get, uh, treatments, services? Do you kind of, do you tell them that the state law says that they can, you know, kind of sleep anywhere and use a bathroom anywhere and drop all their stuff anywhere? Do, do you tell them not, like, the state law is in favor of, um, you know, them making sure that they can, you know, do what they want to do? And, um, there's nothing that can be done to them? Is that, is that the message that you sent out?
I mean, that's the exact opposite. You know, when Shelley told me people were coming in her backyard, I told them, you've got to stop going in Shelley's backyard. I was like, hey, she has a ring camera and I've seen you. Just stay out of there.
I just wanted to say that because.
But no.
The whole thing that.
Totally have these conversations. And like, one of the big things is that that's not our harm reduction. We respect you and you need to show us respect outside of the room. We, we call the harm reduction the room. Um, and we have conversations. I was like, man, you can't keep, you can't do that. You have to pick up after yourselves.
And, and we, to that point, we also, we understand that we have an individual who is typically, if they're being dealt with, with harm reduction, has a significant substance use disorder, which is probably co-occurring with homelessness and whatever else. But we also want them to understand that. We understand that you're in crisis and your life's in chaos, but you still have to be responsible. You know, what you do to yourself, you know, we don't want you to harm yourself, but ultimately that's your decision and we're trying to help you out of that. But to her point, what you do to people's property, what you do to, you know, in public, it's like, you have to have respect for the community and for others in the community. So, yes, to her point, that's.
And, and one of the things that we found the first night when we were doing the evening outreach is that people don't have trash bags and they ask for trash bags, like little ones. I gave them. So like, I took all my home shopping bags and folded them up and brought them in. So now, because he's like, do you have anything for me to put my trash in? I'm like, absolutely, so we can collect trash.
You guys give out trash bags too. You guys give out trash bags.
You give out a lot of stuff.
You do, yeah. Tampons, feminine products, trash cans, just the small ones.
Peter, Councilmember, I'm sorry, Councilmember.
Well, um, thank you. So first of all, thank you all for being here and for that excellent presentation. I think, in my experience, when, as Councilman Alshar refers to, kind of the average citizen doesn't know all the facts, I think they tend to fill in the gaps. And sometimes that's not accurate. And I also believe that when, uh, people in positions of leadership, you know, write things on Facebook as opposed to having conversations with other people in positions of leadership, that continues to exacerbate, uh, the perception, you know, and reality issue. So having said that, when, when I read Senator Quarterman's letter, which again, I'll restate, I do not agree with the characterizations or even some of the facts that he mentioned or opinions, I should say, that he, that he gave. You know, I kind of focused in on this one. And, and, and it's not to take away from any of the other issues that he wants, you know, wants to address. But it also, uh, I, I saw it as a, an attack on the entirety of the harm reduction program, as opposed to a complaint about needle litter, to use the term. So my brain started turning and said, okay, how can we address what the perceived and, and quite frankly, real issue is, which is syringes that are left behind, uh, for whatever reason, by whomever? And, um, and that's when I reached out to you all at the health department. But also, uh, I reach out to Councilwoman McIntyre because, um, long before I got here, five years ago, they just celebrated their fifth anniversary. Uh, Councilwoman McIntyre and then Councilwoman, uh, Emily Keller, brainstormed and came up with the idea of the Bridge to Change Program, which is currently facilitated by Reach, a nonprofit in our community. And I believe has some, some, uh, city funding, um, as part of that. And I thought, okay, how can we use the resources that are out there to try to help support the effort that you all are already making? Obviously successfully, if you're collecting back thousands more syringes than are going out your door, how can we help support them? So I'm pleased to say that we did call a meeting and had a discussion with the Executive Director of Reach, um, who facilitates the Bridge to Change Program, and talked about redirecting their efforts from the traditional just picking up trash, which is that, at the, the, the purpose of that program, to focusing on, um, uh, you know, recollecting any syringes that are, that are identified in various locations. Also talked to the health department about providing, uh, training. While it's not significantly difficult, but one should know how to pick up a used syringe. And providing PPE, uh, personal protective equipment, i.e. the right gloves that a person should be wearing. And sometimes I, I don't know if it was the city that's providing them or, or you guys, I don't remember, but providing also the kind of the grabbers, as well as, and I'll just pull these up. You know, the appropriate, uh, receptacles for, uh, used syringes.
Oh, no. It, it, because you can. Yeah, once it's full, able to clip closed.
So, uh, so these are just two examples. This is obviously a more, you know, individual one. This is pretty much like you see in any doctor's office, um, that, that, that gives, uh, injections of, and, and referred to as sharps containers. Uh, so providing these to, to the folks. And this is all on top of what, quite frankly, I learned that the health department is already doing, as was mentioned, you know, every day.
We're extremely efficient.
And you're right, that's true. I found that out firsthand. And so, uh, I'm pleased to say that, that, that Reach has agreed uh, to, to work in conjunction with, uh, the health department. And then I've also made an ask, um, because, uh, one of you guys said, I'm not sure who said it, uh, just a little bit ago. You know, sometimes there's a lack of public awareness. So you have a phone number that people can call and you get calls, but not a lot of calls. And I think in general, it's because, um, the citizens of Hagerstown don't know. So my ask was, hey, can you guys put together not only the cooperative part with what you're doing, with, with Reach and the Bridge to Change Program, but a more robust hotline? So I think you've got some ideas on that and would ask you to share those as well.
So we're still kind of working on the hotline. But we do have a number that goes to three different phones that we'll be using. The, um, 3310 number goes to the after hours and it automatically comes to me anyways. Um, so we'll use that number. Then we'll use our Facebook because we wanted tons of different things, right?
Lots of different.
Lots of different ways. The Facebook for our Behavioral Health Services Messenger. And then they can text the, um, crisis line and it will go to my phone. So there's like all these different things. I just have to iron it all out and.
Figure out when I'm going to sleep.
Finish out the camp. I doubt that many people are going to call. I mean, honestly, I figure people really call during the day when they can see a syringe. So it's probably going to be more daylight and things like that. So it's fine.
I mean, I'm sure we'll be passing the number out. And, um, that way.
We're going to do an advertisement. We're going to give it to you to put on the city. Um, I already have the little video made and everything, like. So it's just a matter of ironing out those numbers, um, for op, like other numbers to get it rolling.
Yeah, I'm saying that because I, I listen to a lot of conflict. And sometimes I'm on the phone. And last night after the meeting, I was on the phone with a, a couple of different homeowners. And sometimes it takes, so it takes a lot of muscle to reflect so people feel heard and understood around any of their conflict, and especially around personal property. Um, but I was on the phone last night for about an hour just listening to a homeowner. Um, and if they could have a space that they can feel like just that they're feeling hurt or, or even that someone, you know, call this hotline, your address now, they know that there's an issue there. You guys will send people out, you know, all the things that you shared you were doing. I think that that would help, um, much better than, um, for me to, to, and I love to do that work. That's not, but on top of being the mayor of the city and then trying to make sure that the community, all of it, right? Feels heard and understood no matter what. And, and I care about all of the services and I also care about all of the people. And so I think that the hotline is an amazing idea. And if I would definitely, definitely volunteer some of my time to work the hotline just for that reflective listening. So I could do that outside of, you know, being the mayor because it's very difficult to make sure I'm listening for public safety. And that being my number one concern is the mayor of the city. But then also that they, that they have enough, um, that I've reflected back enough where their feelings and values are.
And just to add to that, I think one thing is about the outreach is that we're not just outreach to individuals who use substances. We're also outreach to people that are in the area where there might be heavy substance use. So we have conversations with neighbors, you know, because we follow up on every overdose report we get through the medical system. And so I always say, they're like, well, we didn't see the person. I'm like, but you saw a neighbor or you saw someone on the street and they have those conversations. So we are able to do that. So it's not just that type of outreach either.
Where the hotline, um, once that's established and get the calls, will you take notice of the same areas that's popping up that may not be known?
Yes.
So if that's the case, can you also communicate that to the city?
Yep.
Because again, like Councilmember Alshar said about the lighting, I know light, we have light running at one point.
We just addressed Clarkson Avenue, uh, last week.
Yeah. It was Matthews.
Matthews Alley.
Yeah, the one off Antietam. Yep. Oh, that's where we were.
I think it'd be interesting too, if, when Bridge to Change and you collaborate, um, which is an excellent idea. Thank you, Peter, for expanding that. To see where these needles are concentrated and collected, you know, because I know how it works that Reach, you know, Eric says where they go and this is where they go and kind of like evaluate that data to see if there's more of a concentration that the health department needs to put or any other organization and resource that we may have. So, um, that's, thank you very much for thinking outside the box. I appreciate it.
All right. Do you have any more questions? Peter?
No, just thank you for being here.
Thank you.
Thank you guys for your support.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
We're okay right now.
Yeah. We only have two more things, James. Okay. Recycling and we, um, refuse collection discussion for mayor and council? Oh, this is mayor and council, Jim Bender, the city engineer.
I don't know. I'm just calling like mayor and council right now.
So then, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm, I'm good.
All right, the regular session meeting on the 23rd of last month, there were some concerns and questions raised about the city's trash recycling and yard waste collection program. So put together a memo that, um, hopefully answer some of those questions or gives a clearer picture of what our program is about. But I'm also fortunate to have, uh, representatives here from Waste Management uh, that can actually speak to, um, not only the contract that we have with them, but actually the, from the operational side, how is trash collected here in the city? So let me first go back and, and talk a little bit about our, our program and the contract. The previous contract the city had, uh, for waste collection was from 2017. And around, it was also with Waste Management. Around 2020, 2021, uh, Rodney and I knew that we were going to have to put the contract out to bid again at some point. It's the old contract was in there. So we had conversations with, uh, both Waste Management and Republic Services, two of the biggest, um, collection contractors here in our area. And just talking about our program and changes that we could, could make or things that we, other things we might try to do. We were told by both of them that the trend nationwide was moving toward automated trash collection. Republic Services, um, even went further than that. And they said if the city did not take steps to move toward automated collection, they weren't going to bid on the next contract when it came out. At the same time, um, we were in the pandemic and the American Rescue Plan Act funds started to flow to the city and to other municipalities. And the council at that time decided to earmark a portion of those funds to go toward the purchase of these new trash carts that would work with automated collection citywide. So the, the new carts were purchased and distributed this spring. And then as of July 1st, we made the decision that, uh, as of July 1st, the new contract kicked into gear, but was also the deadline, uh, for people to have to use the new trash carts. Uh, they would no longer be able to use old trash cans, couldn't put out loose bags of trash. Everybody was supposed to be using the, the new carts. That was a transition that we are still working through. Um, there has been, I, I need to give a shout out to Jeannie Jeffries, my administrative coordinator, who, I'm not exaggerating, the first two weeks of July, she took over 2,000 phone calls. And it was people complaining that the trash wasn't picked up. It was people saying, hey, I need another trash cart. You gave me the wrong size. So she's been, had been dealing with that. The good thing is that, you know, we made it through July and I've seen a decrease in the number of calls that we're getting, uh, complaints. And I think that's because people are coming into compliance. They understand now what the expectation is for, for trash. So that, that's kind of the basis of our plan. There are still some issues that we're working through. One I know that, uh, has been raised is with these new trash carts, there are certain parts of the city where residents really don't have a, a good place to store these carts. So they end up in front of the properties or on the sidewalks, uh, in front of those properties. We are working with, uh, some of those property owners to see if we can come up with alternate storage locations for those carts. Um, I'll be honest, in some situations, there aren't many good options, uh, just because the, of the way properties are configured. But it is something that we're still working through. And I said that compliance seems to be ramping up and we're getting less calls about, uh, people improperly setting out their trash. Um, but we still have, there are still some. And, uh, in talking with code compliance and talking with Scott, I think that we've decided to change one of the existing policies that's in place, uh, on the code, on the code side, to actually start, uh, keeping track of these repeat offenders that keep setting their trash out incorrectly and laying out a process where if it happens enough times, then we, we are looking at, uh, fines against those people. So that's really just the background on the program. I want to introduce Shanna Kistler. She's our, um, she manages our account, uh, for the city for Waste Management. And I think I'm going to throw it to her and just let her give a little bit of perspective on, um, nationwide, what Waste Management is seeing as far as collection and, and what that meant for our new contract here in Hagerstown.
Nice to see everyone. Um, so I don't know how everybody's viewed trash in other, um, state areas. The biggest one that I can speak to is New York City, where they're going to Cart Limited Services, um, to try to, you know, clean up the city. And, um, a big part of it is to combat driver shortages. Um, since the pandemic has happened, we are seeing, uh, 40% less drivers, um, truck drivers specifically, coming out of training scenarios. And, you know, I can speak personally that we're constantly hiring drivers and, you know, finding ways to provide services that, you know, we're able to, um, work to use less resources. use less resources to get the trash picked up or the recycling, whatever it may be. By going automated, you're decreasing from, you know, two drivers or a driver and a helper down to one, one individual. They can use the machinery from the truck to pick up those trash contain, you know, the trash containers. It's not a unique situation here in Hagerstown. The city wasn't built for automation. A lot of cities aren't. So, you know, while we're harnessing newer technology and, you know, different ways of servicing trash and recycling, you know, we're having to kind of find a way to make it all work. So, you know, we have implemented two automated trucks? We have one right now and one that we're getting ready to implement. And then, you know, we're still using some of the, the rear load to service the downtown area.
Right.
So that, you know, we're not creating as much of a disturbance to the community. You know, we are mindful that this is a big change. It's hard to change behaviors and expectations and it's an educational opportunity. You know, we're, we're trying to be as gentle as we can while implementing these policies according to the contract. You know, but we're all about educating and putting it out there that, you know, we're, we're personally finding it easier to explain how the, the system works with automation and, you know, how the trucks work and why, you know, there's rules of how far you can place the cart from the curb and things like that. Mostly it's so that we're able to service it with less people and list less resources. And that's nationwide. It's not unique to Waste Management. It's not unique to just Hagerstown. It's across the board.
Can I, I, I want to just add that when the first rollout, I seen like so much on social media, not that I watch social media data, but I did, I seen so much on social media that hated everything. I mean, even when the, they were dropped off, this is horrible. But what I've seen recently is a lot of folks telling other folks, call down and get another one. Or, you know, like, so it seems like the community is starting to educate and hold each other kind of accountable. I seen some comments where it was, they didn't pick up my trash. And it's like, you have to, it had to be closed, you know, called down. And I seen someone say, I called today and mine was dropped off today. And so I am seeing that, I look for conflict specifically. And I start, when I start to see each, like other, you know, community kind of take care of each other, that kind of made me feel good because there's some folks that is like, yeah, this is new, but this is what we have to do. And it was on your trash can, the rules. It was on your trash can, the, the starting line. So I'm starting to see folks hold each other in their neighborhood accountable and not just blaming, you know, and saying it's impossible to do when we have to kind of shift. So, thank you.
So be happy to answer any questions or if you have comments about the program. It's the perfect opportunity. You know, you not only have the, the account people here, but Dave Marshall's here, who operationally, he's, he's one of the main people that is, you know, sending guys out on the street to collect the trash. He probably, he probably knows more about the actual collection here in Hagerstown than, than anyone else. So this is your opportunity to, to ask questions.
I have a question for him. I just want to know if from on the driver's side of things, since this has been rolled out, how much harder and how much easier has it been? And are you having to still have a driver and an assistant? And how long did, how long do you guys foresee to just be to one driver? That was, that was a lot, but did you?
That was a lot, just the easy. So I have my, my lead driver is building the route for the ASL truck as he goes. And he keeps the rear load trucks to the outskirts that he can't reach and will work there. So he's building and evolving the route on a, on a daily basis. Right now, he has to get out quite frequently to move cans out of the way from mailboxes, cars and other cans. We were speaking pretty specific and some, so some stickers, some stickers to put on top of the cans, you know, three feet from anything around you. So the time it takes for him to constantly get back out, get in, it's about the same as it is with, with a, a two man crew in a rear load truck. But it's, it's a, it's a trial and error process. It's not going to happen overnight. And I think we're looking for next week or two for the recycling truck to start mirror the, the trash route as of now.
Thank you. The biggest thing with the, having the helper on the back is you're always going to have certain streets. So I, I could always picture Church Street down the south end of Church Street. As you get closer to Burr Hands, there's parking on both sides. It's a one-way street. There's actually spots, depending on the size of the vehicle, where the driver can't even physically get out because he can't physically open the door. So there will be streets like that that will continuously have to service with the helper on the back. There's just no choice. Coincidental that you all had the, the people here about needle collection because one of the biggest things that our drivers and helpers are thankful for is not picking up the bags by hand anymore because we've had needle sticks. So I used to do Dave's job. I managed the drivers that were down here for quite some time. In my first five to seven years of managing down here, we had no needle sticks down here at all. In the last four years, we've had five needle sticks. Now, not all of those are hydrodermic needles or whatever the case may be. Some of those have been actually tattoo needles. So we had one that was a real big tattoo needle. One was another one that was actual earring needle. So, you know, where they, they put the big gauges in there. So, but in general, it's less of that picking up. Same thing, glass, loose trash, we're finding a lot less. We literally, my first year Waste Management, 12 years ago, there was an apartment building right along Washington where guys would literally just throw trash right out the top window, right onto the sidewalk. And then they just expected us to sweep it all up and clean it all up. We don't get any of that anymore. All of it's in toters. So I feel like it also helps you all in the streets. You don't have as much loose trash blowing in the streets. And the street sweeping isn't nearly as robust as it has been since COVID. I know when I used to be down here, you'd see the sweeper truck all the time. I don't, I still feel like you all do it, just not as much. But I feel like you're probably seeing a lot less trash downtown in the area, blowing along the streets and things like that. That's coming from people's trash. Obviously you still have the people littering, instead of people dropping needles, obviously on people's property and things like that. But there's a lot more containment to it than there was previously. I think that's the biggest thing that we're seeing and the biggest thing that our drivers and helpers like the most. They're not physically touching a lot of stuff anymore, so.
Wildlife interaction. Right thing that comes out and destroys your trash sidewalk. Dog bites directly if the cans were what it needs to be, the gentleman doesn't have to get out of the vehicle. So. Thank you.
Counsel. Sure, I have a few questions. And I have some statistics or stats questions. If you don't have the answers, if you could get it back to us. Appreciate it. How many customer trash, I'm going to focus on the trash versus recycling. I know it overlaps, but how many trash customers are there in the, in the city?
We serve right now a little over 16,000. I think it's 16,050, but I'll get that number for you.
How many of those are residential? Not, I'm not talking about multifamily housing. I'm just talking about homes, single family homes, duplexes, typical residential.
That I would have to do a breakdown on. It's not separated the way we keep our records right now.
Okay, because the rest would be commercial, right? Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but while everybody pays something for their trash removal, it used to be included in, but now there's a fee on the quarterly bill. Like commercial customers pay 100% of the cost of trash removal, right? As opposed to residential paying a subsidy. Am I correct in understanding that?
I'm not sure that I understand what you're, what you're saying.
Customers do not, we pay for our own trash.
In other words, the city doesn't subsidize, subsidize the customer woman. I can understand. City does not subsidize the trash collection of commercial customers. They're paying their full fee. How many of those 16,000 places where we're picking up trash are going to be able to, to utilize, you refer to it automated, I'll just say the arm that picks up the tote and dumps it in the tub. How, how many of, how many of our customers are going to actually be able to be, have their trash collected that way? And then the other side of that coin is how many are not. You mentioned Church Street, but I'm guessing it's a lot more than that.
Yeah, that's just the first one that popped up in my head. I would say at the moment, the way the route is built, we're looking at a third. So we currently run three trash trucks daily.
I'm not, the, the
So a third of the rest.
I misspoke. Let me, let me rephrase. Not based on how your, what equipment you have now or whatever. How many can physically be picked up using the, the, the automated truck? In other words, any, any streets that we have that have parking on both sides, the answer's no.
For the most part, correct, at the moment, yes.
Not sure, most part. I mean, I think it's
Right.
100%, no. Any streets where the, the cans can't, you know, you can't get to the totes. I say cans, they can't get to the totes for whatever reason. You can't pick those up. They will, they will always be two-person operations. So my question is, what percentage of those 16,000 customers is never going to be able to use an automated truck? We don't know.
Roughly.
That's fine.
Roughly at the moment, since we just started, we're looking at a third of them being picked up automated, two thirds of them not being picked up automated. So as I was saying, we had three trash trucks currently servicing the city of Hagerstown. One of those is going to be fully automated. The other two at the moment will not be. So in our estimation, that's going to be one trash truck doing it two nights. So a third of it will be picked up automated for trash. And then recycled roughly about a half. It's going to be slightly over that, so.
So you said it a couple of times, at the moment, that you expect that to change?
Possibly, depends. Again, this was, we're only in our second week, so there may be a couple additional streets that we weren't anticipating he could get down, that he says, I can actually get down those with no problem. So.
Okay.
There's mostly aerial maps, us physically trying to drive up and down streets, making notes of things, things like that, where we, we feel like he could get in with no issue at all. Before sending a truck down there and it's being like, too late. Now you're a quarter mile down this road and you got back a quarter mile down this road because you physically can't get to the bottleneck at the end of the road. So.
Okay. Well, when do you think that that will be fleshed out?
I'd say we should have that by the end of August.
Okay, a couple of weeks. Okay. So if I could ask that sometime, Mr. Engineer, if you could come back and just give us this, even to send us an email as far as me with that. When it comes to what I'll refer to as commercial properties, I guess the question. Because unless a, a property owner previously had a dumpster from somebody's, they got a lot of totes, right? Especially if it was a multifamily housing. Yeah. So there are, as you pointed out, areas around the city where they're just lined up in front of the house and one of the sidewalk, side of the house, side of the unit, whatever. Which I don't recall seeing that level of, you know, trash cans all lined up 20 at a time. And it's, I think it's exacerbated because the rule is, I'm going to read out of here, out of your note, the lid has to be closed, right? Now, I'm sure if it's popped up a little bit, that's, I can't drive away, but, you know, if it's overflowing, it's a problem. So the answer is call for another tote. That's, to me, exacerbating that problem, especially with commercial property. And then you add in all the recycling totes that go with that. So I'm struggling with the fact, as was described, you know, this is an effort to make it so they can work with less people and less resources. And yet it's creating a situation, I think, in our city that starts to become unsightly. I don't know what the answer is, but I just don't think throwing more totes at the problem is the answer. And quite frankly, and I know, you know, the argument was that was ARPA money, there was a million dollars spent on buying these totes. Where before, the city really didn't provide, not, not very many. Everybody got their own trash can. So it wasn't out of the city's pocket. And as those totes, trash cans get used, especially with the mechanical arm is picking them up and shaking them and putting them back down, they're going to wear out and they're all going to need to be replaced. So I have a lot of levels of concern. I'm very familiar with the automated truck because Ocean City, which I think has their own trash force, if you will, all of their vehicles are that style. But I will also tell you, at least for six months out of the year, they pick up trash at every location three times a week. That's not what I'm suggesting or anticipating for Hagerstown.
But we've just only been two weeks in, so, and I think that he said that and I, I didn't mean, I, I'm not going to say I'm sorry to cut you off. I did mean to, because we are two weeks in and I, what I was hearing was that there's ways to attempt to make adjustment or to be able to see how this is working. And in the transition of anything, I believe that you have to kind of, you, 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 you kind of bump your head through and you figure out where you're getting your most bruises at. I mean, we just talked about that with the needle cleanup. And I don't want to be contradictory in this from one agenda to the other, right? Like I just want to make sure that we're using the same principles. And that if we're going to take time as a community to be able to transition, then I want to make sure that we're, first of all, I want to make sure it's feasible and that it's fair to the constituents and the citizens of Hagerstown. But then I also want to make sure that we know what a study looks like and what it, not even a study, what it means to roll out something else, look at it, look at the data. And maybe it's all wrong. Maybe we'll get through this in six months and I won't be here anymore and be a whole new council, maybe, and not, not a whole new council. New people and it may not work, right? And then that's for the elected body to come through. But in the, in the meantime, I think that we should look at this as a way to kind of see how we can be collaborative and work together instead of just saying, I don't think it will work. And I'm not saying that's what you were saying, but just for the sake of the public that's watching. Again, these are conversations that I spend an hour on the phone on. So if I'm asking community, bear with us for a minute. We're trying to work through some things with staff and with, with partners. And I want to make sure that I'm using the same voice at this table.
So if I could finish my thought, where I was going with that is that the money was spent by the city on the totes. When I first saw, because this was done before, you know, this contract was done before I was here, I asked the question, how much did we save? But the reality is that the contract, current contract is more than the last contract. So where I'm trying to, what I'm trying to get at is and I'm not necessarily talking about, you know, the nuts and bolts of the collection, but that's part of it. I'm talking about how is this sustainable? How is this going to work? Especially as we really, in two thirds of our trash customers, you can't use this process anyhow, or roughly two thirds.
Yeah.
And so I'm trying to figure out how this is going to work from a sustainability standpoint. As you all invest in new equipment, you know, you said you have one truck on the road, you got more coming. And I'm sure that they're not inexpensive pieces of equipment. But I also understand you have labor costs and, you know, everybody has challenges hiring in every industry across every sector. But I'm just kind of putting it out there. I'm asking these statistical questions because I'm trying to figure out how this is sustainable. That's where I was going with, with all of that. Thank you.
Before you guys, Councilmember Ashar has to go to another meeting and I want to give him the opportunity, maybe he has a next meeting before he slips out, just if he needs to slip out.
I don't know if I have any real big questions. And I was here when we had these discussions and made this determination to move in the direction we have. It certainly has its hiccups. I think that a couple of the takeaways from that, those discussions at that time was, one, our costs are increasing because the cost of recycling as an industry is increasing because the value of recycling has declined. And we made a conscious decision to continue that because, one, it's the right thing to do and two, there's a uh, there's a cost to us anyway on the backend, uh, for disposal of that additional material. The, uh, the second is, um, I think we understood that there would be some growing pains with the, the new totes. Uh, I think that, that we're working through those. Uh, I, I'm definitely surprised that that we won't be able to, uh, at least until you, you work those bugs out, use that automation on as large a, uh, you know, segment of the customer base as, uh, we probably envisioned we could. Uh, I think that that's, uh, you know, the same animal that probably every other urban environment faces, but, you know, there, there are uh, options, I'm assuming for that, such as having the person that has to pull it out, you know, to have it lifted up, I see that in other communities all the time. Uh, but it at least saves that time to simply pull it out, dump it and put it back and addresses some of the concerns of the direct handling. Uh, but I think the biggest issue that we had at that time was how do we solve the issue of the, the trash that ends up, you know, out and about? And without putting out, uh, very bright totes, uh, you know, that, that do that. Uh, I know that, that former Councilmember Barucci suggested we take some of that off of the main, uh, streets and put it in the alleys. Uh, I was not a huge fan of that at that time, um, that has had some success. Uh, where you have, just like this, and since adapted your, uh, vehicle fleet operations and, and, you know, I mean, your, your personnel to, to address that, it's not a one size fits all. I think I said at that time, you know, we can't get rid of the, uh, the yard waste program, you know, because there's a huge segment that uses that. Um, but, you know, that's a cost that benefits folks like myself, you know, who live on blocks where they deal with more vegetation than folks that, that, that don't. Um, I think the big one for me, and I know that, that Peter just pointed this out a bit ago, is and I was looking at our city code, and I did this the last time this, this conversation come up, is in our code, we sort of define what a commercial property is, but we don't really define at what point you're just too big for the program that we have. You know, how many totes is too many totes in front of your place? To, to, for the city to pick up and a, a good example for me is, you know, every Tuesday when we had these deliberations for ten years was the, uh, uh, the beer store right next door where it's just boxes and boxes of set out, and it's like, wow. You know, we're picking that up in a residential trash program. It really isn't, you know, what you envision as haulers to be collecting in a residential, you know, nature, and so um, I think I would look to you guys for that one particular item to figure that out is, are there customers in the city that are just too big of a customer, if you will, to fit within what you define as, you know, being that collection? Because I think it speaks to the issue of, um, you know, the, the, the volume of containers sort of setting out in concert with one another.
Right.
You know, uh, that you collect every week. That said, I think that in that effort, it gets to the thought process of, okay, we have these streets, as you point out. You know, maybe there are, uh, areas where we can afford to lose a parking space. You know, here or there, and I know that that's probably a taboo subject and people are freaking out at the moment, even mention of it, but, you know, maybe that's, maybe that's the place within some of the blocks, within some of these streets where you say, okay, you know, the tote goes here, you know, and then, you know, you go grab it. Now, there was a time of day that that would have completely not worked because everybody was using their own receptacles. You know what I mean? But here, we don't have that issue any longer, they're uniform. So, uh, you know, uh, that, that issue, you know, has resolved itself. And so, but the big one for me is, is, you know, if you can identify areas where, where too many is too many or set out, and then the city needs to, in my opinion, uh, update its language by looking at some of the other communities, uh, urban areas that, that, that say, hey, if you're a ten apartment building, you've got to get, you know, a, 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 um, you know, a dumpster. You've got to do that in, in some uniform way.
Right, well, as part of this effort, we also had to revise, uh, the city code, the section that deals with trash and recycling. And as part of that, uh, revision to that, we did add language in there that allowed us to put a limit on the number of units that we would provide service to. So there is some ability already in the code to cut that off. The question would be on the, all these existing multi-family units. What do you, do we go back and say, you no longer qualify for service, do we continue to provide service to them? I think that's, going forward, I think we have a mechanism to avoid this situation, or at least limit it. It's all the existing situations that we would need to deal with.
Right, and I guess I look to them with the existing situation and say, hey, do you guys have a better solution to that? And maybe that solution is, you point out, uh, maybe that solution is, you know what? We're not going to provide totes at this location, but we're going to absorb the cost of that dumpster because it saves, you know, time and expense and efficiencies. Uh, recognizing you're still going to get billed, you know what I mean, as a customer through this program? But that billing may look a little different because we're going to provide a dumpster at your location and, you know, and remove that sort of residential component of multiple, uh, totes. So, that'd be my two cents.
Jim, are the replacement or additional totes still free?
They are.
I know the big haulers are spreading that rumor.
I accidentally told somebody.
It varies, I mean, I've, I've looked, um, tried to look at other cities and what they do with their programs, some, most cities do charge some nominal fee for an additional cart. Um, and I guess that's something that we consider, can consider doing here as well. I think the thought was, we didn't do it for the pilot area that we did downtown. We didn't charge for extra totes there, so we thought as part of this, we would roll this out without charging for extra totes. But I think that to speak to, uh, Councilmember Perrini's, um, concerns about sustainability, that may be something that we have to look at doing in the future as these carts wear out or, um, you know, start to fall apart. Maybe we do need to start charging a fee for additional carts.
Just, uh, want to reiterate, as we still hear a lot of questions about it, and luckily, like you said, there, there's a lot more correct information out there, but uh, if folks need smaller cans, larger cans, a second can, they just have to reach out to your department, right, Jim?
Right, through the Hagerstown Recycles hotline, which is managed by our department, they can call and request, we have three different sizes, thirty-five gallon, sixty-five gallon, ninety-five gallon. Uh, so you can choose the size that fits best for you. In some cases, people need multiple ninety-five gallon carts, in other cases, a single thirty-five is big enough.
And one last question for me, sorry. If you have a neighbor who has a big tote and another neighbor that has a little tote, can they swap?
They would need to notify us because we track the we would just want to be able to identify where should that cart be, but
I have seen some, the last two days, some pictures of folks with the carts all over the street and people having to get out and kind of, you know, move them in order to park or, um, not knowing whose cart is whose, maybe that's up to us to put, I wrote my name on mine, I didn't address. But, you know, like, I, I did see those types of things, and so for your driver or for the automate, um, automatic one. Um, I know mine, when it comes down, uh, I'm usually getting ready to leave out the house, it comes down pretty easy. Um, and if it did fall in the street, they pick it up, but I don't know that that's happening in other neighborhoods because there was a bunch of, well, I'll say, I won't say a bunch, I won't exaggerate, there was at least three pictures on social media just showing carts in the middle of the, totes in the middle of the street.
Yeah, we've had recent conversations, we've had, I don't say turnover, but a little, not turnover within the company, just turnover within the, the crew that's been down here. So we've had two or three different newer drivers that have been down here, um, and this, we've had conversations with them a lot recently, so we've gotten the same kind of complaints. A lot of it happened over probably the last six to eight weeks, um, that's just us following up with them, hey, not just you yourself, but make sure your helper, if you're that truck with the helper, uh, make sure your helper is putting it back in there. Um, at this point, we've done away with pretty much all the temps we have, so the temp that we were having a few issues with out of the, you know, the temp agency, that's been corrected, so now we have a permanent person down there, so. You shouldn't, that should start to go away immediately, so shouldn't see a bunch of that.
Thank you.
And we actually, with that being said, we actually now, and we have habitual offenders that tend to put it like at the rear of their car, and then we put it right back where we got it from, and then they complain, it's like, so we, we, we do have a list of, I don't say habitual offender, but same people, same people that call in on Brenwood, that say they didn't get picked up every single Thursday. And then every single Thursday, our driver's now taking a picture of it and sending it to Jeannie, say, hey, Jeannie, by the way, if this guy from Brenwood comes in, it's not even out in front of his garage or anywhere at all, so we have those kind of lists as well, and we, we do a good job communicating with Jeannie with that to make sure that if she gets a call or, uh, the, the girl in our office gets a call, she understands that, hey, this is a person, and she'll ask those kind of questions, what time were you out? Were you really out? Like, if it, if they call, say that they forgot one time, we have no problem going back. That's those ones that we go back six, eight times, same type of thing, so.
Thank you.
No problem.
You guys have anything?
Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Councilmember Ashar, did you want to give closing comments before this next one, in case you have to leave?
One thing I think that we want to make sure when Steve comes up, the one thing that Oh, the recreational vehicles, you okay?
All right, did you want to give closing comments in case you may leave, are you good?
Well, sure, because I got a cruise. So one is I'm fine with the language as it's changed, as I have, uh, seem to read it. But, sure. No, that's our fault, mine and others for speaking, but, um, so I just wanted to comment that, and we talked about it earlier with the health department. There, there was a, a, a meeting, uh, yesterday that, uh, certain folks, uh, were invited to. That did not include an invitation to, um, the Board of County Commissioners, it did not include an invitation to the city council about the very things that folks want the county commissioners and the city council to talk about. The issues, uh, iterated in, uh, you know, in the letter that we received. And, you know, it's really difficult to engage in those discussions if you're not going to be invited to the table to participate in those discussions, and, you know, we don't work in a vacuum as a body at this table. So having the mayor there is great, and I appreciate that you were there, and we recognized as a body when we went uninvited. That, you know, it wasn't our meeting, uh, we would have broken the Open Meetings Act if we would have spoke, and so we didn't. Um, and the commissioners, you know, it can't just be the president there, you know, they don't operate in a vacuum, they're a body. And, and, and so, you know, they were all there, uh, save for, uh, uh, Mr. Harvey, that, um, you know, uh, it, it's odd, for as much as has been pontificated, uh, on the matter, you know, all of us found out about it shorthand, right? I mean, I was calling folks, uh, council members yesterday, one and two o'clock saying, hey, you know, you can, can you drop what you're doing and get here? And, 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 and we all did, save for the folks that weren't, uh, in town, and, and, uh, the individual that has pontificated the most, uh, you know, didn't attend. Uh, the only, uh, you know, one of the body that didn't attend, and I think we were appreciative that, that Paul was able to gather folks from the health department and, and, you know, the city, and by the way, the, the chief did, uh, great in, in commanding, uh, the meeting, uh, in concert with, with Sheriff Albert and, um, the representatives from Maryland State Police and explaining exactly how policing works. Um, and, you know, uh, sort of, uh, you know, fact from fiction, uh, so, so I appreciated that. And the opportunity to sit in and just listen, uh, for, for a bit. And, you know, I think that, that good conversations, uh, will come out of that, uh, that our residents will get to hear here in these, uh, meetings and in these settings, you know, that, that, that should be heard. What, what I found disconcerting was, um, you know, maybe somebody can correct me if I'm wrong, but it was mentioned at the Board of County Commissioners meeting this morning that that meeting where, you know, only a select few of folks were, were invited to begin with, uh, and that a lot of others, uh, uh, you know, showed up at, um, was recorded. And I don't know whether that was mentioned at the beginning of the meeting. Uh, we weren't informed, none of the parties that, that were actually invited to the meeting to attend were informed that it was being recorded. Uh, if there is a recording of this meeting, uh, you know, the participants at the meeting didn't appear to be made aware that that was going to happen. Uh, not that I think any of the participants would have said anything any differently, uh, but I think it's appropriate, you know, uh, in, in preserving the public trust in those settings, that if that's going to be the case, one, you let the folks know that are participating. Uh, two, uh, that you provide that, uh, you know, uh, to the public, uh, for their ears as well. And three, you know, we understand, uh, for what purpose and which person, uh, uh, conducted that, uh, without our awareness. So those are my comments, uh, yesterday.
Thank you, Councilmember. Thank you, Mr. Wagner, for being patient with us, and then our last thing on our agenda is a follow-up public hearing from two thousand twenty-four land management code and amendments. And we have Steve Rockwell, Rockwell there, zoning administrator.
And I know your meeting has been quite long, so I'm not going to keep you any longer than absolutely necessary. Uh, we had the public hearing for the annual packet of text amendments, it's sixteen of them. Uh, we received no additional comment beyond that was, that which was offered by a couple of the members at the hearing. Rather than go through each item, item by item, I figured I would just respond to questions. Uh, but if the next step at this point is you're going to give us instructions on which of these sixteen proposals you're okay with moving forward to uh, or moving forward with, and then we would introduce an ordinance later this month and then adopt it the following month and be effective thirty days thereafter. And you're not required to accept this as a whole or reject it as a whole, you can pick and choose, tell us, don't do number this, do, do these other numbers, whatever. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try to address particular concerns.
Questions, you need a man to look over? Do you have any questions, Steve? Councilwoman, that's Councilmember Chandler, you need some?
No, but I appreciate the revision on the, uh, recreation of the people. Uh, that's, that's helpful, I think that will help get that where it needs to be. Thank you.
Councilman, Councilmember Brady, anything? You good? Councilwoman?
I don't have any questions.
Comments?
Uh, I, I mean, I don't have any questions about the content.
Oh, the comments are concerned, whatever. Are we good? Okay, are y'all good?
So are we having direction to introduce an ordinance that adopts all of these proposals?
Are y'all good?
Speak now, forever hold your peace.
Yes, for now, I mean, discussion. Yes, yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
City administrator.
Lots of stuff going on this weekend, MainStreetHagerstown.org is where you can find them, and that's good for me, Eric, thank you.
Councilwoman. Councilmember Brady.
Uh, no further comments, thank you.
Councilwoman, Brenna.
Okay, well, um, as everyone knows, uh, Aaron Brooks is now a bronze medal Olympian. And I just want to say that the support and the collaboration and the idea sharing to not only Aaron but to his family that was done as a whole, as a community. If that much effort could be done for that purpose, what else could we do with that much energy? So I know we had talked about collaborating with other partners and other entities, but it's just a, another example of what, how we can move mountains if we come together. So I know he felt that, and his mom is very thankful for the love. So I know he felt that, and his mom is very thankful for the love that we all shared all the way to Paris. So, and also, speaking on a meeting that we pulled a chair up to that we were not invited to. I just want to say again, because I called or talked to Chief Kifer yesterday after the meeting. But I just want to put on record that I am thankful for his leadership because the questions, it was back-to-back questions about, you know, HPD and staffing. And he stuck to the facts. He provided the numbers. He also pointed out that HPD, what HPD is doing to prevent crime. I know we see the Facebook post that lists how many, number of firearms or number of narcotics that's off our streets. But it's important to know that they're doing that work to prevent other crimes from happening. So again, thank you to HPD for the work they're doing, and that's all.
I'm going to sound a little bit like a slow echo here, but I wanted to address a few things here. I just want to take a minute to thank everybody in this community, slow echo here, that's, that's come together to see some positive change and positive feedback. First and foremost, our law enforcement, special thanks to Chief Kifer and Captain Langston especially. They've been rock stars lately, and I know it's hard, hard work, what they've got going on. You know, thanks to all the coaches, teachers, business owners, spiritual leaders, citizens, anybody that's actually stopped to ask how they can help and provide ideas rather than cause division with disingenuous commentary. I appreciate each and every one of you, and I, I hear everyone. Public safety is paramount to all of us here. Feeling safe and being safe is and should be the primary objective of a thriving community. I, that said, I wanted to let everybody know that they've heard this now. A closed-door meeting happened yesterday between law enforcement, local leadership, and community partners. Neither I nor the rest of the city council were invited to attend. But I and others here did take the opportunity to sit and observe. And I'm glad that I did because it was a good meeting. And what I took from it was that there's no lack of passion or effort being expended by our local leadership and local law enforcement. I, what I do think there is, is a lack of education and communication between agencies and leadership providing service to the community. I want to thank everybody that was present at that meeting because everybody in that room certainly cares about our city, its safety and our prosperity, including four of our five county commissioners. The one that didn't attend had some choice words this morning at the county commissioner meeting about the lack of effort perceived or the lack of seriousness about public safety. And somehow this individual was able to listen to a meeting that was not made public, which for me raises concerns both about legality and transparency for our taxpayers. This is a shame because it was an enlightening meeting that everybody in the public deserved to hear. So to that, I'll say that we will conduct these city council meetings in an open and transparent manner to make sure the public hears the same things that we do. Of course, no one finds violence, crime, or open drug use acceptable. We just don't. We are not currently at our budgeted capacity with police staffing. And these are all issues that I wish I knew how to solve in an instant. But I look forward to trying to improve all of these issues. And with that, I'll end on a good note to say that we have so much to look forward to here in Hagerstown, so many exciting things coming. And I look forward to all of our continued growth, conversations, and eventually celebrating with our new bronze Olympic medalist. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to start out with congratulating Aaron Brooks and the amounts of work that a young man has had to do that has come from this community. When I did some research on Olympians, some things had to be around them specifically. Good coaching, good teachers, good government, a good place that they could feel safe. And I just want to say that we have that, we must have that. We have a bronze Olympian that is born, raised, educated, coached. His father still coaches right at the Police Athletic League, POW, at our fairgrounds. The watch parties had the honor of spending two days during lunchtime with former teachers, coaches, administrators, young people. People drove from Pennsylvania to sit at a watch party. It brought so many of us together. There was good conversations. I want to thank Ms. O'Kane, who still teaches exactly the way that she did when I was in ninth grade. When I arrived at the restaurant, she had an activity. And it was, hey, Aaron is being a light in this dark community right now, and I wanted to make Olympic ring lights to give out. And we just sat there and we put together, and as we did, we called up. And other people came over and we called up and we asked, how are you doing? How's things going? And I agree, if we could find ways to do that around some of the other, not just issues, but celebrate together, then we build a better community. We remember how many partners that we have. I mean, I put a post on Facebook and said, where's the watch party? And within 25 minutes, Ms. Kim O'Kane, who is a teacher, has been teaching for 30 years, said, I contacted Primanti Brothers. They're going to open up for that. And I mean, I've seen others, you know, do the same. I just want to, I just want to reiterate, it doesn't have to be a specific leader or person that's always seen to take an initiative to be able to bring people together. Congratulations to his entire family. I mean, good God. I went to church on Sunday at Glory Fire. I mean, they're talking about just what this means about faith and around hope and around love. Yeah. I want to say in reference to yesterday's meeting, it was a good meeting. And I'll say it's a good meeting because anytime people come together to reason together is good. Anytime people refuse to come to the table or just refuse to only have conversations without looking eye to eye or face to face, then it's bad. Because we had local, county, and then state in the room and law enforcement, I felt as though hearing them and that they work together as staff and staff works together well and leadership works together well, then I feel like us as the politicians, you know, need to not try to step on what they're doing as staff, if that makes sense. That was my takeaway from it. I will say that today, I just so happened to see a little bit of the county commissioners meeting. And I instantly, I say often, I don't do Facebook to comment, but I did. And I specifically wanted to comment back to Commissioner Harvey because it was divisive. And I think that we all need to start doing that with each other. If you catch me frustrated and I'm in a public space, let me know. That's divisive. And I, and I've had people come and say to me, Tekeisha, you make it hard for me to support because of what you publicly say. It makes it hard for me to know that I can come to you and work with you. And that was four years ago. And I would, I would like for all of us to do that to each other. Because if not, then we sometimes think that we're the only ones that have the right answer about this community. And that, that creates more public safety issues than we can even imagine. Conflict has a cost. And at the other day, we're in Hagerstown in Washington County. We're just a few months away from election. It is very contentious nationally. And anytime I've seen local or county using national politics on social media to, where we all have to see each other, it makes no sense to me. And I just ask that we all just hold each other accountable in these seats. I want to say congratulations to Mr. Lynn LaRue, conductor for Hagerstown Municipal Band for 50 years, and is retiring. I also want to say congratulations and thank you to Ava. She has a box, a utility box wrapped, and I don't know why I'm saying congratulations. A utility box wrapped, but I was going through the drive-through. And she said, wait, are you the mayor? I said, yes, ma'am. She said, oh, my goodness, I got one of the utility boxes because when Brittany, who's our downtown, what is she?
Engagement.
Engagement officer, went to North High's digital media class and pitched to them Ava submitted and actually has her, her design downtown. And that was really cool to hear while we're out in public that Brittany, you know, doing her outreach thing and is engaging the kids. I want to say to the residents of the city of Hagerstown, we hear you. We are residents too. We're experiencing some of the same things. It's never okay to say this is happening everywhere. There's nothing we can do about it as leaders. I don't think that that's what comes from this elected body's mouth. And I would pray that that's not coming from our staff's mouth. Congratulations, Hub City Garage. Lieutenant Governor was here last week. Afterwards, it was amazing ribbon cutting. Afterwards, she went to a Hagerstown flying boxcar game. And Boys and Girls Club were in the Bowman suite, the kids were. And I'll tell you, they were so excited to be able to see the Lieutenant Governor, Secretary Keller, the Mayor of Hagerstown. I mean, it was just an amazing little opportunity for those little people. They just, they just had a blast right there. And I want to say congratulations to everyone for a successful and safe national night out last week. The wind did start blowing pretty, did you ever make it in dunk tank? Oh, it's, it's, it's the wind. The wind beneath Matt's wings saved him from having to go into the dunk tank. But congratulations to HPD, all the staff and volunteers. It was beautiful out there. It was safe. And I also would like to apologize to Earl. I meant to apologize to Earl Sterner while he was here. Yesterday, I made a reference to the people that were in the room at the library. And I want our community to be mindful of that, you know, at times. Look around the room and look who's represented there. And I made a reference and said, me and Tiara were the only two people of color. And then I said, oh, and Earl. And Earl, I just not, Earl, you were not an afterthought to me. It was just a spur of the moment. I meant to say that while he was here. So I apologize for missing Earl in that moment. And with that, we're adjourned.